I don't know if anyone can hear me. I can see you, but I cannot hear anything.
Hi Supervisor Adams, we can hear you.
Thank you, and I can hear you now, thank you.
All right, good morning. It is past nine o'clock, so we're gonna commence the November 28th Monterey County Board of Supervisors meeting. Madam Clerk, we call the roll, please.
Yes, good morning. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present with Supervisor Adams appearing remotely pursuant to AB 2449.
Anything else we gotta say, County Council on the remote appearance?
The AB 2449 requires a brief description of the reason why Supervisor Adams is appearing remotely, and I believe it's because she has a contagious illness, and therefore, under the just cause exception for AB 2449, she can appear remotely.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, we're gonna call for additions or corrections to closed session agenda by County Council, anything?
There are none today, Chair.
Okay, this morning, we have closed session items 1A through E. This is time for the public to make any public comments on any of these items before we go into closed session. There's no members of the public in person, so we'll go to those on Zoom.
Yes, Christian Snyder.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So I want to say thank you to the supervisors' offices that I was able to communicate with. I really appreciate your time. I submitted an additional document yesterday. I apologize, this is really hard for me to write. It's something that I go to therapy for. So if it appears jumbled, or whatever, please excuse that. And I just have a statement for you. So Joe Moses campaigned on this idea that he was doing his job, that it was an election, and that I've never been exonerated. And, you know, I believe him. I believe that he was doing his job as a member of the Sheriff's Office to help elect Steve Bernal. And he's correct, I've never been exonerated, not from his false accusations, but in the court of public opinion, because no accountability has ever been created. Look back at the results of that lack of accountability. The people that got hurt, the costs, the damage done, the omission of official duties, and the safeguards and practices in place. The right to petition the government for grievances, and the right of the people through their elected representatives to have complete information in order to express the will of the people and to fix problems in government to make it more just and fair. That is why you are a quasi judicial branch. County employees from an agency have taken an oversized role that contradicts the Brown Act, and it appears these individuals are willing to put public funds, public trust, integrity in elections, and your elected positions at risk in order to protect themselves. The last overt doctrine is exactly for circumstances like this. For the offending individuals in a conspiracy, do not stop their bad acts, but continue to do so during the legal process to create even more litigation and to muddle up the situation even further.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. I'd like you to go a few more seconds over.
I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, thank you, anyone else?
No.
Okay, so no further public comments, we will close public comments, and we will recess into closed session, we'll be back at 10:30, thank you. Mic check, one, two, three, mic check, one, two, three. All right, welcome everyone to our November 28th Board of Supervisors meeting. We're gonna reconvene, and we will call for the roll from our clerk.
Yes, good morning. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present with Supervisor Adams appearing remotely pursuant to AB 2449.
And we'll get a statement on that, remote appearance by our County Council.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Chairmembers of the Board. Supervisor Adams is participating remotely due to AB 2449, pursuant to AB 2449. She has a contagious illness and is allowed to participate remotely under the just cause exception in AB 2449. Now, I understand that Supervisor Adams will not be participating this morning. She's attending a very important meeting with Caltrans, but she will be participating hopefully this afternoon when that meeting is done.
All right, thank you very much. Now, we're gonna ask for the announcement of, for the Spanish interpretation services by our interpreter Diego Celis, who is today on Zoom. Go ahead, Diego.
Diego, you're muted.
We're having some technical difficulties here, but hopefully he'll be able to make that announcement before we proceed.
Diego, you're muted still.
No se oye, Diego. Gracias Diego, okay. So today, we're gonna go to this Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll ask our colleague Supervisor Askew, if she could lead us today, if we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, everyone.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Askew. We'll go to additions and corrections by the clerk.
There is none.
Okay, today, we have numerous, we're going to ceremonial resolutions. These are items two through, we have quite a few today, two through 12, although 12 has been removed, so two through 11. Do any colleagues wanna move, pull any of these items? Okay, do any members of the public wanna comment on any of these resolutions that we'll present in just a few minutes? See none?
There is one hand.
Okay, these are on ceremonial resolutions only. We can have public comment on these?
They took their hand down. Christian Snyder?
Yeah, well, public comments in just a bit, for items not on today's agenda. Okay, so we can entertain a motion by Lopez, second by Church. All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those against, the motion carries for two, zero. So I think I'm presenting the first two, and then we have a third by Supervisor Lopez, so I'll go to the first two. Now, if I could get a mic. It's working, there it is. All right, the first, the one and only, wanna invite up Pete Delgado. Let's give him a big round of applause, our CEO of Salinas Valley Health. Good to have you here, brother. This is a sweet moment for all of us on the board and the public. I've had the honor of working with Pete Delgado over the last decade, since he came here, leading one of the premier, one of the most important healthcare institutions in our county. And wanna, wanna take an opportunity, as he has announced his retirement, I don't know how many days you have left in the leadership role, but they're limited. But before this year ended, we wanted to take an opportunity to honor this man, the great services, the great programs that he has done, especially during the pandemic, when our communities were hurting, when people were dying. Pete Delgado and his team at Salinas Valley Health really stepped up in a big way to save so many lives, from our youngest to our seniors and everybody in between. Salinas Valley Health was a true leader. So today, we just approved this resolution honoring Pete Delgado. I'll just read some of it, and then we'll ask him to say some words, and also hear from our colleagues. But for me, this is very important, because I've enjoyed working with him, and I've seen the great work that he's done, not only at the hospital, but out in the community, and really doing things that perhaps I've never seen other hospitals do. So this resolution is recognizing Pete Delgado upon his retirement from Salinas Valley Health, and it reads, Pete Delgado earned his Bachelor's of Science degree in Healthcare Administration from the University of Houston, a Master's of Science degree in Hospital Administration from Texas Women's University, and attended Stanford University's and Harvard University's Senior Executive Program. He has served as President and Chief Executive Officer of Salinas Valley Health for the last 10 years, which encompasses and acute care, public district hospital, 10 urgent care clinics, a group of primary care and specialty physicians, and more than 2,400 staff, including 322 board-certified physicians. So that's a, that's a big team that you have led. Pete Delgado has previously served in numerous other leadership roles all over the country, and there's a long list, too many to mention here today. But Pete is a founding member of the National Forum of Latino Healthcare Executives, which works to increase representation of Latinos at the executive level of hospitals across the nation. He was named 2021 a Top Diversity Leader by Modern Healthcare and Citizen of the Year in 2021 by the Salinas Valley Chamber of Commerce. Pete, Pete's leadership at Salinas Valley Health achieved the American Nurses' Credentialian Centered Magnet Recognition in May 2021, which fewer than 10% of hospitals and medical centers nationwide received this prestigious distinction for nursing excellence. Pete has led Salinas Valley Health to expand their services to Salinas Valley Health Mobile Clinic, bring statewide, state-of-the-art care to residents through South County, growing their network of 21,000 patient visits in 2014 to more than half a million today. So therefore, be resolved, the County Board of Supervisors, on behalf of all our residents, hereby recognize exemplary accomplishments, leadership, and service Pete Delgado has provided to our communities in the County of Monterey, including his 10 years as President and CEO of Salinas Valley Health, and wishes him success, good health, and happiness in all his future endeavors. If you give him a round of applause once again, Pete. Muchas gracias for all your tremendous leadership for our county and our people.
Thank you. Thank you Board of Supervisors. Thank you, I'm grateful and honored to receive this, especially being in front of all of you. Glenn, Louise, Chris, thank you. Wendy, thank you for this recognition. I can, I cannot say enough about the team that we have. You know, I did it all myself, but, but that's besides the point. I have an amazing team. Plus, you know, starting with our executive team, our hospital, our staff, our medical staff, I wanna thank them for continuing. You gotta surround yourself with people smarter than yourselves. I didn't know, I don't know if you knew, I found that out. Muchas gracias amigo.
For sure.
I appreciate it.
We'll present that to you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, let's take a photo. All right, all right, I think our colleagues, I think I got any words here, those who wanna, go ahead, Supervisor Lopez.
Yeah, just, you know, anytime you walk in a room, you look around and see who, who can I walk up to, and I know I'm gonna have something to talk about with. And every time I saw Pete, I knew that was my guy, I could walk up to him at whatever event. And it started with the weirdest thing, but it's the boots. Tell me you're wearing the boots today, you wearing your boots?
Yes, I could attest to that.
Hey, I asked him, who are you wearing today, right? It's kind of, for us in South County, and you from Texas, you got that connection. But Pete, every time we had a conversation, it was meaningful. It was about the people that we're serving and how they're doing. And I appreciated that connection, even though I didn't directly interact with you as much as perhaps somebody who represented the area around the hospital. You always made sure to engage, to make sure that I understood how decisions that were being made at your institution were impacting Southern Monterey County. I appreciate that lens that you carried for la gente, this pueblo, de todos los pueblos del Cundado de Monterrey. It's an honor, and to sit here today and recognize you for the work that you've put in for our communities. And so, on behalf of the residents of Southern Monterey County and the 3rd District, thank you for your contributions to our communities.
Any other colleagues? Supervisor Askew.
I did notice your boots, Chris, when we walked in today. I didn't say anything, but I didn't know it was relevant, but apparently it's relevant. Pete, I just wanna say, the thing that stands out as I think about your leadership, and everything that you and the team that you've built have done through Salinas Valley Health for our community. And it's, in every interaction I've had, it's the care and the love of the people and of this community, and of just the humanity of who we are and how we treat one another. Like, that's, that's always shined through above and beyond any topic we were talking about. As Chris said, you've, you've always reached out when there've been issues that need to just have an open dialogue, and they haven't always been easy conversations. I'll acknowledge that, but it's always, you've always approached those conversations from a place of, how do we collectively achieve the highest care and delivery of appropriate services to our community? And you will be missed here, and you have some big shoes to fill, but I think you've left a team, the team in a, in a great position, so hopefully you'll come back and visit us and stay in touch. Thank you for your leadership here in our community.
We'll go to Supervisor Church.
So Pete, I wanna thank you for all the, all the good work that you've done, and, and all, and we had a, you know, over the years, we had a, had a good long chat over in Marina at the Water District when we were judging chili over there, but I didn't realize that you were from Texas. So, you know, you're really a lot more experienced judge, obviously, than, than I am. But it was, it was good to, good to talk to you there and hear about, you know, your, your future, and wish you the best, and thank you so much for all you've done for the county.
Thank you, and I know Supervisor Adams isn't here, otherwise she would share some kind of words as well. And Pete, I wanted to say, first of all, we're gonna miss, also, not only is Pete leadership, but he's a good singer, Tex Mex, you gotta see us sing, and we're gonna miss you at the Rodeo. But, but prior to all that, Adrian could attest that during my time in the State Assembly, SVMH was going through some difficult times. There was a lot of strikes that cost a lot, hospital a lot of money. It was a state audit that I was, that I led on to make some changes at the hospital, but ever since you came in, it's been smooth sailing. The hospital is solely been focused on, on continuing to provide high-quality care for the people of Monterey County, and you have left this hospital a better place. So I wanna thank you for your legacy that you're leaving behind, and you could look back and said, I did a lot of good, good work there in Monterey County, and we appreciate all you've done for all of us. Muchas gracias, brother. Thank you very much, you have a good one, thank you. Give him a lot of, a round of applause. Thank you, Pete. Our last, my, our second resolution, I wanna call up Elsa Jimenez, the Health Department Director, Prashant Shinde, the Bureau Chief of Clinic Services, Kristi Mitchy, the Assistant Bureau Chief of Public Health. And all come up, and the staff of the Planning, Evaluation, and Policy Team, but the public needs to know who they are, you know. Come on up, because this is a special recognition, and it's only proper after recognizing Pete Delgado. This is a resolution recognizing the 100-year anniversary of the County of Monterey Health Department, celebrating the past, present, and future of public health in Monterey County. So before I pass it to Elsa, I just wanna read what some of this says. It says, "In 1923, the County of Monterey Board of Supervisors accepted a Rockefeller Foundation grant for $5,000 and provided a local match of $5,000 to create and maintain a model health, health department. This funding established the Health Department as an official entity, staffed by two, only two public health nurses, a health inspector, a stenographer, and a county health officer to focus on mother and children's health, prevention and treatment of disease, food safety." Come on this way, everyone. "Today, the, the Health Department has a budget of $370 million, 1,200 staff, provide services and programming focused on disease and injury prevention, and communal disease surveillance and response, chronic disease prevention, public and environmental health laboratory, emergency medical services, environmental health education and regulation, animal control and sheltering, primary care and behavioral health, public administrator and conservator guardian, and population health and racial and health equity efforts." I wanted to say all of them, because the public needs to know the many things that our Health Department does for our communities. I'll jump to the end, but it says, "The County of Monterey Board of Supervisors, on behalf of our county and all our residents, hereby recognizes 100-year anniversary of the County Health Department and calls upon its residents, public and private organizations, and local officials to continue to partner with the County Health Department to create healthier and just..." "...county by learning and, and more about opportunities to engage in health policy discussions, encouraging young people and others looking to make a career change to consider career in public health, and investing public funds in disinvestment, disinvested communities and residents. Together, we can make the County of Monterey a healthier and happier place to live, work, play, study, and pray." Thank you very much, I'll pass it to Elsa.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chair, members of the Board, for this recognition. It's really my honor to be the Health Director when we celebrate our 100 years of public health in Monterey County. Just wanted to give you a little bit more history. So during the gold rush, believe it or not, when Dr. Thomas M. Logan, who was a native of South Carolina, started to think about the impacts of living conditions, water, et cetera, and so that really was the impetus for the beginning of public health. That was in 1870. And then, in the late 1800s, early 1900s, we had a person by the name of Dr. N.K. Foster, who was a Secretary to the State Board of Public Health in California, that began to further expand the need to record vital statistics, both birth and death, really looking at food. And so he was the one who really started and developed the Bureau of Vital Statistics and Pure Food and Drug, and the State Genomic Laboratory. This was really the beginning of public health in the state of California. And as Supervisor Alejo said, we became a Health Department in 1923 with just $10,000, about five staff. And then, in 1929, so right after we became a Health, the State Department, the state had a reorganization, and they developed their first public health. This is going out, right, or is it just me? Or I can just yell. So, so just, we're real excited to be celebrating our 100 years. Initially, it was all about helping people live longer, making sure that people had access to healthy food, et cetera. And over the years, we've really transitioned. And a lot of that, the development in science, et cetera, really added 25 years of life expectancy. So we really have public health to thank for our ability to live longer, and hopefully keeping people out of the hospital is our goal. But it has really evolved over the last, at least decade, at least here in Monterey County, where we first embraced health and all policies, and really looking at living conditions of our residents, and how many of our residents didn't have the same opportunity to achieve their fullest potential. And so then, that's when we began to shift and really kind of lead with health equity, and more recently, racial equity, and looking at how communities are designed, what policies are in place, and really helping to shift that, and bringing the community at the center of the table, and having them drive what local public health services should look like. So I'm really proud of our team that we have, that has really been able to shift that. Even our regulators and environmental health, we lead with education. And then, and then, of course, we have to, you know, if they're not providing sanitary conditions for the food they're preparing, then we address it. But really trying to make sure that all of our residents have an opportunity to achieve their unique potential. We became the 11th Department in California to be recognized under the Public Health Accreditation Board as an accredited agency, and we're going through our reaccreditation process now. That was in 2018, and then in 2017, we received the California Endowment's Arnold X Perkins Award for Outstanding Health Equity Practice. We were the second Health Department in the state of California to receive that recognition, and all because of the work of our, you know, 1,200-plus employees, and, and growing, and their commitment. This Friday at 3:30, we welcome the public to come to our Health Department building at 1270 Natividad Road. Between 3:30 and 6:30, we're gonna be unveiling our current art exhibit that really highlights public health and the transition and improvements over, over the years that have really, again, helped to contribute to our longevity. So thank you again very much for this recognition, and thanks to my team that continues to, continue to innovate and evolve and better serve our residents.
And maybe we could get in the middle, and ask our supervisors to join us for a photo? Get everybody here. Get Elsa in the middle there, Supervisor could be here on the sides here. Yeah, we could even it out. Yeah, we can even it out. Thank you. Thank you to the entire team at the Health Department. We're now going to honor another member of the Health Department, and to lead this resolution for retiree, one of our community heroes, is Supervisor Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to ask Elsa to join me as well, and Krista, make sure I have the right one here.
It only took 93 years for the Health Department to be run by a female and a person of color in our county, so.
Yeah. And where's the joke?
Forgot that punchline.
Okay, so normally, I don't read the wheresses, and I promise I won't go through all of them, but there's some cool stuff in this one that I really don't want to forget. Did you know that Krista Hahney's degree is in zoology? And then her second was also in zoology, right? And then that came the PhD. Krista, you've contributed so much to our community. This resolution is chock full of incredible achievements that in no way do I doubt added one of those years of life that Elsa was talking about to every member who lives in Monterey County. You have done so much that I have to call them out. So one of the key ones here that we heard about was the Arnold X Perkins Awardee, but also the city of Gonzales being the first to adopt a health element. Getting down and finding those partners willing to engage. When I read that line, it reminded me that every time I turned around in one of those important rooms when we were celebrating an achievement based in health, Krista was quietly standing in the back and called out as a partner and always say, no, 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 no credit here. And you're probably up here thinking the same today, but no, this isn't that time. No, you're not getting away this time. On, when I read down towards the bottom here and where you're currently active, it just speaks to who you are as a person and where your commitments are to our community, reaching beyond the office. You don't leave it at the desk, right? As Chair of the Big Sur Land Trust, you work with the YWCA, the Equestrian Trail Association, as well as Board President for, it was the Bicycle and Equestrian Trail Association, all things that bring value to people who live in this community. And I know that it's at your core and the reasons that you do what you do, but all of these I've done without talking about what she does every day, right? The way that life is made richer by people who commit themselves to our communities is something we can never completely say thank you for. So many of you are wondering, well, why am I standing up here today? Because I haven't even said it yet. Honoring Krista as she retires after 22 years, right, of service to the County of Monterey. Those years, especially some of the last few through COVID, you have made sure that our community moved forward with the most accurate information to make the best decisions they could for themselves and their families, and that they had access to those resources on an equitable playing field. Those words cannot be understated. You've been there for every member of this community, regardless of race, color, creed, or status. You are the type of person that we hold up as emblematic of why people should come work for the County of Monterey, because they get to work with incredible people like Krista. Krista, I know you're going on to new adventures, and that is not a word I use lightly. We're so excited for you to enjoy your retirement. You've earned it, but also, no, we're not letting go of you. I was already told at First Five, where I happened to be present, and I said, wait a minute, what does that mean? Oh, don't worry, she's not leaving. We're keeping our hooks on you as long as we can, but we're excited for you to take on some new adventures. And can we all give her a round of applause? Champion is not a word we use lightly. Krista, you are a champion. Thank you.
Yes. Before Krista says her farewell.
I just want to provide a little bit more context. So Dr. Hahney started, her early years were in Canada. Did you guys know that? Probably not. But that's where she really began her educational career in zoology, as Supervisor Lopez indicated. And then a doctorate degree in epidemiology is what brought her to California, specifically to UC Davis. And then we have to thank the Monterey Bay Aquarium for bringing her to Monterey County. In 1999, she became a research biologist at the Monterey Bay Aquarium Sea Otter Research and Conservation Program. Sea otters, humans, I guess we're more similar than not, right? And so 22 years ago, she started her career with the Health Department as a research analyst, where she supported the development of the department's first comprehensive county health Then she became a public health EPI, where she worked on communicable and chronic disease projects. And then in 2007, she became a public health program manager, and she was the first manager over our department's Surveillance Epidemiology and Evaluation Unit. And then in 2012, she transferred from public health, or maybe it was called community health at that time, to admin, and started to oversee our Policy Evaluation Unit, which, by the way, we will transition to calling ourselves now the Office of Equity, starting in July, really, you know, again, being innovative and really speaking the speech. And there is where she helped lead our efforts to become accredited, to help Gonzales, as Supervisor Lopez said, really be the first city to step up and say, we will design communities that help our residents, but especially our most low-income, disinvested communities. And we hope over the years that the rest of the cities and the county will follow suit in making sure that we design places that are conducive to healthy lifestyles, walking, walkable, green space, et cetera. And just to add, you know, under Krista's leadership and even herself, we have a wonderful grant-writing team. We brought in millions of dollars over her last, you know, 15 years with the Health Department that have really helped to establish the Farm Worker Resource Center, that really helped to expand our COVID health literacy efforts. What else have you done, Krista? It's just so much. And, oh my God, she's just phenomenal, and I'm still not, I'm still in denial that she's leaving. The week of holiday really helped, but I know that you're already missed. I mean, there's just so many things, and your team could talk about it so much more, and the community. And I would say that she is a true champion and really advocates and creates spaces for those individuals who normally aren't who we look to for their opinions, their thoughts on what government services should look like, on how their communities should be designed. And under her leadership, our team has really been able to do that and really created major investments in our unincorporated counties with respect to sidewalks. Can you imagine? Many of our kids in Chular, Castroville, et cetera, don't have sidewalks to walk on, to go to school. And really, under her leadership, we've been able to garner partnership with Tamsi and others to really bring millions of dollars of investment into communities that have not been invested in ever. So I hope we continue on that path, and we are very excited for you and Scott and all your future adventures. And I know that you're not moving, so you'll stay local, and I'm glad to hear that you're still going to be on the Evaluation Committee for First Five. I know they would miss you dearly as well. So Krista, thank you so much for all your contributions, and we will miss you dearly, and we will only continue to advance the work that you started. Thank you.
Thank you. It's very hard to stand up here to accept these acknowledgements. And when I first started at the Health Department, I didn't realize I'd be here for almost a quarter of its history. And I'm very honored to have been part of that history and to have been given that opportunity by all the great leaders, all the supervisors that are here now, and the ones that I have been the honor of serving under during their terms, the directors, Len Foster, Ray Bullock, and Elsa Jimenez, who have given me opportunities and seeing where we need to go as a health department, to do that work for everybody. And I do want to really call out to the community how important it is to serve the community. Working with the Health Department is a great way to serve the community, and I think that there are many young people that have come through our unit that I've just so enjoyed watching them realize how great it is to work in public health and have gone on with the Health Department or other health departments. And so this is a life moment. It's been a very fulfilling journey. It's really been dedicated to what I see as a noble cause of working in public health and championing health and racial equity. But it's been a journey with many, many partners, and when I'm in those rooms, all those many partners, it wouldn't be possible without them, and to keep going for them, whether it's the community members, the colleagues, business partners, so many that have been part of that work. And together, we've really worked towards that vision where every individual has a fair and just opportunity to be as healthy as they can be. And that includes having that environment around them that makes that choice an easy choice for everybody. My heartfelt gratitude is really there for everybody that's been those colleagues that shared this path with me, and their commitment has also been that bedrock to success of the work. Thank you, Supervisor Lopez, for saying what I've contributed to, but it is so much everybody here. And when I started, there were children being born in this county who are now graduating from our university, our local university, and anything we've done is for the youth and for the future of the county, because they are the future of the county. I'd just like to continue working collectively on that through those volunteer efforts, and many more to come, I'm sure. And I do recall that when I first started in Planning Evaluation and Policy, and people said, get out in the community, serve on boards. It's part of our work as the residents of this county to do that, and there are many commissions that could use people there. And so I do plan to continue that, and I hope others can follow and do that, because that is about our shared endeavors and the hope we have for a healthier and more equitable future. So thank you to everybody here, especially the team of Planning Evaluation Policy Unit who are there, and I noticed, didn't want to come up here like me, they have that humbleness as well, and I do want to acknowledge that I'm here receiving this, but it is also the acknowledgement of all the work that they have all done. Thank you.
On behalf of, as a Chair of the Board, I wanted to thank Krista Hahney for being a true, true community hero, and I want to thank all our team for joining us for her celebration here today at the Board of Supervisors. We're going to keep moving on, on our agenda here. We're going to go on to appointments. These are items 13 through 20. Thank you, Mr. Delgado and team from Slidest Valley Health. I gotta get used to not saying SVMH anymore. And all our Health Department folks, thank you very much for joining us as well. Okay, we have 13, items 13 through 20. Item 13 requires us to make a nomination, and for our RCRC representatives, and that includes Golden State Finance Authority and the Golden State Connect Authority, Board of Directors, and Supervisor Lopez has been serving as the primary, Supervisor Church has been serving as the alternate. I would make a motion that that continues. Does anybody want to move any other items or speak on any other items from the Board Appointments, 13 through 20. Yeah, and I'm going to ask for a separate vote on item number 20. Okay, now, members of the public, any comments on any of these appointments? All right, I'll make a motion that Supervisor Lopez continue as the primary for RCRC on item number 13 and the other Board of Directors, and Supervisor Church as the alternate, and make that a motion to approve items 13 through 19. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against? Motion carries 4-0 with one member absent. Now, on item number 20, I just want to call for a separate vote, because I just want to abstain from that vote, but we'll entertain a motion.
I'll move on item 20.
Okay, motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against? Those abstaining, I'm an abstention. So motion carries 3 to 0 with one abstention. All right, item number 21, these are consent items, items number 31 through 58. Do any colleagues want to speak on any of the consent items? Supervisor, ask you.
Aye.
All right, we could go to the public first, public comments?
I'd like to, on consent, just comment on 35 and poll on 43.
Okay, let's go to 35 first, since you already speak on that. Go ahead.
Sure. My, I know this is in the agreement we have for the rate increase, but looking back over the last five years, and I'm just raising this up for future agreements that we make with waste haulers, is I notice out of four of the last five years, the rates have increased over twice what the inflation rate is. So I don't know, I know we have a formula for doing that. If there's good reason that, you know, that rates increase either two to, you know, it's going from about 2% to 4% in 2019, 7% to 8% in 2020, 13.5% to 21, over 4% to almost 6% in 22, and then nine, or 7% to, 7.5% to 9% for this year. And the inflation rate, for the very highest of any one of those years, was 8.5. So I just, I just, it's caught this, it just, it's something I know we need to look at when we, in the next year, when we start looking at this contract.
It is coming back to us on December 5th for the hearing at 1:30, so maybe those are questions staff could be prepared to answer at that time. All right, so hopefully staff are paying attention and taking note of that. Okay, and you wanted to pull item 41?
43.
43, okay. This is item number 43, this is retractively approved and authorized a $9 million increase to countywide service agreements for security guard services.
My experience with security guards, they've been primarily here and for the county and the courthouse, and they're exceptional, they're friendly, they're great. I want to point that on out, but I do notice that we are using them more, security agencies more for emergency services that the Board referral makes reference to, and we had some problems with that in Paharo during the flooding, when they were manning the bridge. And the problem that happened there is that, I think we need to look into having some appropriate training, because there was some racial comments that were made to residents, and I had several residents bring that up to me, so I, you know, I would like, you know, I would like to know, you know, what we can do here on this contract before we are approving it, on really trying to make sure that we're going to have properly trained, culturally sensitive security guards that are out there, especially during these emergencies when people are displaced and they're most vulnerable, because we just can't have that kind of situation happening again, where people are being told they shouldn't be living in this country when they're just wanting to get back to their home across the river.
Our CEO has any comments on that?
We work with the Department of Emergency Management to ensure that we have appropriate security staff. I remember the, I do recall the issue, because I heard the same as well, and we work through the department to make sure that we addressed it timely, but we can also ask that we do something in advance of an event happening. So I'll work with the Department of Emergency Management when it comes to any security issue, but then, security during an emergency, but then also with public works, facilities, for just the regular use of our security team. And I agree with you, I think we have stellar security staff, and we've had to use them significantly more, increasing some of their training is probably warranted.
If I may just jump in, is, yeah, I think the problem, the real problem came about is that some of these security folks were coming in from out of the area, they weren't our regular people who know what's going on in the county. And so my, my effort, you know, I'm just general direction here, is I'm hoping we can look into perhaps having some training and looking at this beforehand, some preventive action, so we some, some training and looking at this beforehand, some preventive action so we don't get into an emergency situation. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Askew, what items?
Thank you. I just want to note that item 39 appears to be redundant to an open session item. I'm not sure if we need to approve it on the consent, so we can remove that. And then my question was also on 43. A $9 million increase seems significant. It struck, caught my awareness as well. And the staff report just sort of states that each of the departments who were impacted will be absorbing the cost of the increase. I'm not, I guess I have some questions about, do, are our departments really able to absorb a total of $9 million in unanticipated additional costs? So I was just curious first to get some more detail about which departments are impacted and how they'll be absorbing those millions of dollars of increased cost. I assume that some of those costs may be FEMA reimbursable, but I don't know. And so I would just, I would like some additional information about which departments will be, how that $9 million breaks, breaks out to departments, and what impact that additional cost will have on those department budgets.
Yes, Tom Skinner is on.
All right.
Here on the Board, members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Tom Skinner, Contracts and Purchasing Supervisor. The increase for this is to add on to the funds on the existing countywide service agreements to provide countywide security guard services, not only to the, when there's activations, but to the day-to-days of security services across all county facilities. The reason for the increase is we are at year two and a half of a five-year existing countywide service agreement, and we have expended the funds we originally asked for back in 2021, which was $11 million. Now, part of the usage that, why we found ourselves at the shortfall is because of the usage for COVID, the fires, as well as was mentioned within the, the storms in January and March, where those security services were deployed to road closures, the distribution points for food and water, as well as for the different shelter sites that we had. Those were all 24-hour usage. I agree that we can discuss with the security services providers, we did go out to bid, we awarded it to six different companies, and we just added another one about a week ago, another local minority company. But to Supervisor Askew's concern about the funding coming from one specific department, it is not. As this is a countywide service agreement, all 27 county departments have the opportunity to encumber funds and pull from this, from this countywide service agreement. Like I said, we are at year two and a half of a five-year contract, and we have pretty much expended the funds due to the disasters that we've been dealing with.
Anything else? Go ahead.
Yeah, no, thank you. And I, so I do understand that the countywide service agreement and that we have to have those funds approved through the, through the contract. But I guess I would still like to have some additional information. If we were, how, how our departments are utilizing security and what the source of those funds are for, it's a significant expenditure when we look at year-over-year cost for security, which is important. But I guess it would have been helpful for me to have some additional information in the staff report about which departments are utilizing the contracts, which departments are utilizing the contracts at greater amounts than anticipated, which contribute to the need to increase the $9 million to, to the, to the ultimate contract.
There was a report that Easy Guild Vega had asked for us to run before we created this board item that listed out specifically what departments were using, as well as the usage as per each one of the, the emergency activations. We broke it down, we'd be happy to share it with all board members if you'd like. Like I said, we're not asking for any new agreements by way of this. What we're doing is just trying to add funds so we can get through the five years on this, or the five-year contract, which there's two and a half years remaining. We had to, we mentioned retroactive because we were running out of funds, and as departments were encumbering for this fiscal year, we ran out of funds. There was not enough money in there for various departments to be able to set up their, their POs for this fiscal year. That's why it's retroactive.
Okay, great, thank you. And I think that report that you mentioned would be great to distribute to the board. And in the future, if there's a way just to include that as a detachment on the staff report, I think that would have been helpful as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Supervisor Askew, item 39 is not duplicative because that has to do with the DA's office, whereas the agenda is item number 24 is the sheriff's. Similarly agendized last time. Last meeting was also on consent, and the sheriff's was, because I don't think they're using any new equipment where the sheriff has, and that's why that's agendized. All right, if there's no, let's go to public comments on the consent calendar.
There's one hand.
Okay, this is item number 21, but it includes items 31 through 58. So go ahead, you'll speak for two minutes. Any of those items?
Phone number ending in 902.
This is Nina Beatty. I just wanted to let you know that the video link on the website is a point of order. It's not working. It shows an empty chamber. And so there's no video for the meeting today. So that's all I wanted to say.
Great. We'll have our team look at that, our IT team. Thank you for letting us know. Anyone else on consent calendar?
Keith Boyd is on. Keith?
Do you want to speak to any of these items, 31 through 50?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. I'm just commenting as well, following up on what Supervisor Askew said. I mean, and I'm trying to read these board reports. And $9 million is, my curiosity is, is how is that going to impact not only the sheriff's office, but other departments through the rest of the year? We've, we were at, we've had a number of projects come through, through the course of the year, and we've, we diligently worked to absorb those things and monitor our budget. But we had a significant challenge with a, with a pay increase for compa. And my concern is, where is the $9 million ultimately coming from? Are there, were we going to see cost increase in our budget? Or other budgets going to see it as well? Because as Supervisor said, $9 million is a large number to finish out the year and to get this contract going. So I just wanted to weigh that because I know a number of departments are going to be coming forward for augmentation requests pertaining to the funds we've absorbed throughout the year. So thank you for your time.
I don't know if Mr. Vega or other staff can answer that question.
We'll pull the information that has been drafted by the purchasing department in response to Mr. Vega's request. And we'll reach out to departments specifically. I believe that that's probably, the bulk of it is probably related to our Department of Emergency Management's request for services. This does go back to July 1st, 2021. So it's been over the course of time. So we'll, we'll have that, and then we'll reach out to the departments individually.
Okay. So can we proceed today, or do you want to take action on this next week? Okay, all right. All right, perfect. All right. See no further public comments on this item. We can entertain a motion to approve items 31 through 58?
Second.
Moved by Lopez, seconded by Church. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those against? The motion carries four to zero with one member absent. Now, we're going to general public comments. This is item number 22. This is for any items not on today's agenda. We'll allow members of the public to speak on items not on today's agenda for up to two minutes. And I don't see anybody in chambers. So, oh, is there, please come forward. We'll start with those in chambers first, and then we'll go to those online. What's that? Any, any comments not on today's agenda? You can use this mic at the podium here, the next one over. Yes. You could, you could just pull that mic down, please. I'm sorry that's.
I do have some pictures, though. Is there any way that, do you have a document camera that I?
We do have that one. Could you, we won't start your time till we set you up. Hold on. Yes, you can, if you're going to be speaking there, yes, please.
This wire room isn't working because we have to use the wireless.
Oh, got it. Sorry about that. Okay, give you the handheld mic? Yeah, there it is here.
We got it. We're going to move this. This is going to be able to pick you up loud enough?
There's another member of the public want to speak under two minutes while he's set up their camera there? Anybody else want to speak in chambers on any items not on today's agenda? See none? We'll go to somebody online. Okay, let's go to the person online, and we'll come back to.
Phone number ending in 902.
Yes, this is Nina Beatty. I have a point of order first, since the video was not working and the meeting appeared not to be started yet. I would like to, I have wanted to make comments on resolutions and was not able to. So I would like to be able to make a public comment on non-agendized item and a resolution comment for a total of four minutes.
No, resolutions already, we already asked for public comment on those items. We're not taking on any other comment. Well, we're looking at whether that's true or not. I think our Zoom is working because people are participating on Zoom, and that's what, that's the technology that counts.
I see. Okay. Well, then I will comment on the, first of all, that the county did not recognize Indigenous Peoples' Month, despite that we are on the unceded territory of the Brumson, Esselen, Saline, and Amamutson, and other First Nation peoples in the area now called Monterey County, despite the treatment of these First Nation people, and that they survived. The Monterey County honors everyone else. It did not recognize November as their Indigenous Peoples' History Month, and it didn't do it last year either. There's been no accountability or justice or reparations to people. And these people are being disappeared and disrespected by Monterey County. And Monterey County is founded on crimes against humanity, on the trauma, on the theft, on the whitewash against Native American peoples. And the health, secondly, I'd like to say that the Health Department has taken no action to investigate the PG&E nuclear reactor that may have existed at Moss Landing, and the demolition is exposing workers and the environment to harm from potential radioactivity. And thirdly, I would like to say that the Health Department's 100 years have wasted opportunities, damaged lives, and caused needless death because the Health Department priorities align first with government officials, backroom politics, and special interests, not health, not the Hippocratic Oath, nor high standard of care. And we've seen this with the Ford Orts Superfund contamination when Fukushima exploded, the toxic ag chemicals that are ignored in the fields that are damaging especially the children on smart meters. And I understand Krista Hani co-wrote the Department's deplorable 2011 smart meter report that ignored research and the damage already happening. We've disregarded the damage from microwave technologies and the COVID crisis, that policies have caused massive injuries, suffering, loss of life, and other devastation. And instead of early treatment with cheap, easily obtained, scientifically shown effective medications, the department eliminated debate and used fear, harmful policies, and PR, misusing the RT-PCR tests and pushing ineffective, unsafe mRNA shots despite clear science, and especially targeting.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And just a point of order, we did honor Indigenous Peoples' Day on October 12th. We had the Looney Sisters and Looney Elder Tony Serta participate. And in past years, we also honored California Native American Day, which is in September. So we've done it every year, just on different dates. There's probably three different holidays to recognize. We'll go back to our speaker before us, so we'll pass the mic to you.
Yeah, we can see it. Yes, ma'am. My name is Susan Zonlecker, and I am here on behalf of my little subdivision off of San Bonansia Road, along with my husband and my two neighbors over here. I want to tell you about something, an event that happened in the winter of 2023 due to the winter storms. As you can see in this picture right here, this is how our screen, or our creek, rather, the Harper Canyon Creek normally flows. We've lived on the property since 1992, so for 31 years, and there has never been an issue. This is the way it looks, until all the silt came down off of the county hills and came down the creek at an incline and then settled on our property. And this started as of January 18th. So I want you to know that we tried with this backhoe right here to dredge out all the silt that's there, and it just kept filling up. The culvert just filled up every single time we tried to do that. Here you can see that the culvert is completely filled. This was, let's see, the date was January the 19th. And then you can see all the silt that's built up to the side of the Harper Canyon Creek right there on our property. I have reached out to Mary Adams, who is our district supervisor, and I had not heard back from her in eight months. I sent emails, telephone calls, nothing. I finally heard back from a gentleman last week, and that's why I'm here today. We have done our due diligence, as you can see with these pictures right here, taking care of the road. We were in fear of losing our road right there. You can see again how much damage it has done. It changed the topography completely. I was given Mary Adams's information right there. This, to me, is the most devastating picture of all. So you can see that the road, we're afraid of road damage, and we've done our due diligence over the summertime. I want you to know, over 300 sandbags worth, and this is what we've done, to dredge it out on our own, spending our money doing this. And we cleaned up the culvert, as you can see right there. We want to know, the question is, what is the county planning on doing to help us? Because we hear the winters are going to be just as bad as last winter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Maybe we could make sure that Supervisor Adams, who's absent right now, follows up with you and our, and our Public Works team.
I really appreciate it. And my neighbor, Tim Knapp, would like to talk to you about the bid that we got from Granite Rock, and I believe some other things as well.
Any other speakers? You have two minutes. Yes, you're more than welcome to come, utilize your two, two minutes. And we'll make sure to get your contact information to follow up with you, ma'am.
Yes, thank you.
You could use this other mic if you prefer, that one on the podium. Yeah.
Yes, my name is Tim Knapp. I'm also a neighbor here. We, when this happened, we actually went to get a quote from Granite Rock for, to clear out this culvert area. I had cleared out all the sand had come down from the county park. And the quote was $89,000, which was something we couldn't deal with. We did get some help from FEMA, but all of the cost of renovating the creek and removing all the debris and the sand that came down was worn by the, the neighbors. So our two questions really is, is the county doing something to stop the flow of material that's coming out of the, out of the county park? We know that it's, it's had an effect on the culverts that go under Highway 68, especially at the Portola area. And also, is there any way that can we receive some assistance if this happens to us again this next winter or in the future? Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your work and your concerns about this upcoming storms as well. Anyone else?
Yes. Leila?
I was, I was going to those in chambers. I don't know if any, anyone else wants to speak here? Okay. No, nobody else in chambers? Let's go to those online.
Leila?
Yes, hi, everyone. Good morning. My name, or good, yes, still morning, morning. My name is Leila. I'm a homeowner in Carmel Highlands. First of all, thank you to the Board of Supervisors and all your supporting staff for your service. The reason I'm here is that I recently became aware of Resolution 23391 for the Carmel Area Wastewater District Assessment, also known as Corona Road Sewer Project. I have many concerns regarding what I believe to be very serious issues surrounding this annexation that I know you'll want to hear about. And I just wanted to let you know that I'll be reaching out to your office staff in hopes to discuss the matter with you personally. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next person.
Gwen Diablo Amaral.
Good morning. Thank you Supervisor Alejo. Good morning, and thank you Supervisor Alejo. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
I also wanted to take a minute to thank the recipients that have been recognized today for making Monterey such a great place to live. With that said, good morning. And my main concern today that I want to address is my concern that many neighbors in the Carmel Highlands have been discussing with me lately, which is the Carmel Area Wastewater District's annexation protocol and the new Corona Road sanitary system for the sewer. This is causing distress among some with septic systems. While the engineer report claimed that the single-family dwelling properties will benefit equally, some residents don't see it that way. They have new sewer systems that are being maintained and are in compliance with the lamp ordinance. And the proposed, imposed assessment of at least $69,000 over 30 years will cause an undue financial burden on some retired and fixed income residents. The potential assessment could force some of these individuals to re- The potential assessment could force some of these individuals to reconsider whether they can continue to live in their homes as they are now faced with a loss of money and a sense of loss of security. They are prepared to repair or replace their systems when the time comes on their own terms. But I think it should be just that, their terms. I will be also contacting each of your staff in the coming weeks in hopes of finding a solution that could benefit everyone involved in this matter. And I want to thank you for your time and wish all of you a very happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person. Anyone else? Last call for public comments on items not on today's agenda. See none? We'll close that and we'll move on. We're going to recess the Board of Supervisors to convene a smaller agency agenda. The Board of Supervisors for the East Garrison Community Services District. So we'll call that meeting to order and if we call a roll for the record.
Yes. Good morning. Let the record reflect all directors are present except Director Adams.
And she is again, we're in a remote, well, she's not here, so we don't need to do that today. Any additions or corrections?
There are none.
Okay. Any general public comments on the East Garrison Community Services District Agenda? See nobody in chambers, nobody online. We have one consent item. This is to receive a report on the meeting schedule selection by the East Garrison Community Services District Advisory Committee for 2024. Any comments on this item? See none? Can we move by Ask You? Is there a second? By Lopez. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those against, motion carries 4 to 0 with one member absent. We'll adjourn the East Garrison Community Services District, reconvene the Board of Supervisors. And we would go to item number 23. This is just to introduce, waive first reading and set January 9th, 2024 at 10:30 as a date and time to consider adoption of an ordinance to amend the contract between the California Public Employees Retirement System, known as PERS, and the County of Monterey regarding partial service retirement for local miscellaneous members and local safety members. So to present today, we have Ariana Hurtado, Assistant Director of Human Resources, and Melissa Zamora, Risk, Senior Risk and Benefits Analyst. Pass the mic to you. This is our last item before we break for lunch. Thank you, Mike.
Mike, on?
There you go.
There you go. Good morning Chair Alejo and members of the board. Ariana Hurtado, Assistant Director of Human Resources, and Melissa Zamora, HR Program Manager over our Employee Benefits Unit. As you mentioned, the purpose for today's presentation is to provide a follow-up on the county's efforts to bring a partial service retirement program to our agency. On July 25th of this year, the board did approve a policy that would drive the partial service retirement program and allow department heads to request the CAO's approval to have employees participate and reduce their work schedules while beginning to draw on their retirement benefits through KELPERS for the purposes of retaining important institutional knowledge and specialized skill sets to allow for a smooth transition upon retirement. On September 19th, the board further adopted a resolution which approved some of the contract amendments with KELPERS. After further discussion with KELPERS, we have confirmed that an ordinance is also required to finalize those contract amendments, which is the purpose of today's presentation. We are requesting that we introduce waive the first reading and set January 9th as the date for the board to consider adoption of that ordinance. And that action would finalize those contract amendments and formalize our partial service retirement program. And with that, we're happy to take any questions on the program itself or seek your authority.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments for the public? We'll have, I guess, some more discussion on this when it comes back on January 9th. Comments from the public, once again. See none? Can we entertain a motion to set this for January 9th? Moved by Ask You. Second by Lopez. This is the staff's recommendation on this item. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those against, motion carries 4 to 0 with one member absent. Thank you very much. We'll see January 9th on this. We'll now recess for lunch and we'll be back at 1:30. Thank you.
Hear me, Valerie?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. We are going to reconvene the Monterey County Board of Supervisors meeting. And Madam Clerk, we call a roll.
Yes. Good afternoon. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present with Supervisor Adams appearing remotely pursuant to AB 2449.
Do you need to say anything more on that?
I'll just repeat what we announced this morning, that Supervisor Adams is appearing remotely pursuant to the just cause exception in AB 2449 because she has a contagious illness.
All right. And Supervisor Lopez has to be out by four o'clock today, so we'll make sure we're done by then. Let's go to Diego Celis for our announcement for Spanish interpretation. Diego's on Zoom today. Diego, we're having the same issue this morning. Hola, there you go. Thank you, Diego, for that announcement. We're now going to go to item 24 on the agenda. This is regarding the adoption of an ordinance approving a military equipment use policy for the Office of the Sheriff pursuant to Assembly Bill 481. This is the second time this item has been agendized, but today is the regular hearing on it. And today we have our Sheriff Tina Nieto and the UnderSheriff Keith Boyd and Acting Chief Jason Smith. So pass the mic to you, Sheriff. Okay. Jason or Keith, you want to take over?
Good afternoon, Chair and Board Members. This is Jason Smith, Chief Deputy Enforcement Operations Bureau of the Monterey County Sheriff's Office. And I am before you today to present the Military Use Policy Report. I'm going to share my screen for you or the presentation. Give that another shot here.
Give it a couple more minutes. Otherwise, we'll start with the Sheriff's Center presentation and come back to the Sheriff's Department.
And I'm assuming you're not seeing any sharing on your end?
Nope, we still don't see, we don't see anything.
Oh, okay.
Always good. Just test it out with the Clerk's Office before the meeting starts, just to check.
Where's your Zoom? One second Supervisor, just giving us.
No problem.
Technical support here. Share screen. Where's it at? We've almost got it. I apologize.
We have more patience today because there's a lighter agenda.
Okay, I think we're there. How's that look?
It's moving. Yep, you got it.
Aye.
Progress.
All it took was an undersheriff to tutor the chief.
UnderSher slash IT Department.
Absolutely. Hey, it worked last night, so I thought I had it down and that's what I get. So with that, thank you. Assembly Bill 481 was authored to address the funding acquisitions and the use of the military equipment by law enforcement. It requires the Sheriff's Office to obtain the approval of the Board of Supervisors for its military equipment use policy through the adoption of the policy by the ordinance. Sheriff's Office policy must be posted on its website for 30 days prior to introduction and adoption of the ordinance. AB 481 also requires the Sheriff's Office to submit annual reports to this board regarding the use of the equipment, any complaints received, and other similar information. Draft policy posted on the Sheriff's website for public review on September 21st, 2023. Public meeting announcement posted on the Sheriff's social media on October 26th, 2023 for review and comments. Public meeting was hosted by the Monterey County Sheriff's Office on October 31st at 9:00 a.m. The Cayenne Room at Chilling Place in Salinas. And then the initial meeting presentation on November 7th and then today, the 28th. The equipment covered in the policy, some of the equipment is drones, vehicles, breaching explosives, non-deadly launchers, munitions, and rifles. We currently have 10 drones. They're used by our patrol division, search and rescue, tactical response, and the bomb squad. As far as vehicles, we currently have a total of nine. We have one MRAP utilized for flood response, high water rescue, and tactical response. Five Humvees, patrol, flood response, high water rescue. Two pickup trucks that are used by the professional staff for transporting large items and one Bearcat armored carrier. As far as the breaching explosives, they're utilized by the bomb squad and tactical breaching. And then distraction devices, non-deadly munitions. We currently use a 40-millimeter launcher and rounds, noise and light distraction devices, a non-deadly FN303, just like a paintball, and a 12-gauge non-deadly beanbag. As far as rifles, we're utilizing a Colt M4 and Colt 6490 model rifles for tactical response and patrol. The controlling policies within the Sheriff's Office is 208 for training, 300 for the use of force guidelines, 312 for firearms, 316 for deputy response to calls, 408 for crisis response unit, 416 response to bomb calls, 613 for the unmanned aerial systems operations, 1020 for personnel complaints, and 709 for military equipment use draft policy. The 2022 deployments for the year were nine warrant services, one outside assist, seven training deployments, five barricaded subjects, one missing person, one mission prep, and one suspect search. Our requested new equipment, which was the change for this presentation, was in hopes to obtain one mobile command post, which is a mobile office in the, in the field for emergencies. 10 drones identical or similar to the existing equipment we currently have deployed. One Rook Armored Caterpillar multi-terrain loader and one additional AMG Humvee. That is no cost because I would be obtaining it through the 1033 program. It's currently deployed. And regarding questions, complaints regarding the equipment as governed by Lexipol Section 1020. And next year's report would be in May of '24, so that we can get ahead of it next year sooner. And that would conclude my presentation. And if there's any questions?
Thank you very much. Before we go to the public, we will first go to questions or comments from the board. Don't see any? Yes, let's go to Supervisor Ask You.
Thank you for the report and for the opportunity for the public to hear and learn about the equipment being used. And when I'm looking at the 2022 report, the annual report on page three, which provides a summary of how the military equipment was used and its purpose, I'm not seeing what type of equipment was used. And I was just wondering, am I missing that in the report? Is there somewhere else in the report that I can find that?
In the actual report, it does have deployment and what was utilized, how much, you know, how many times each piece of equipment had been sent out and how often. I can pull, try and pull that up and actually reference the exact page.
Okay, great. Thank you. That'd be helpful. And then just again, one. Oops.
Some echo there. Some echo there.
But did want to make sure that that would be included in the 2023 report and sort of a summary of how each piece of equipment was used and its purpose. And then I think I heard you say that this will all be posted on the Sheriff's Department website.
You might have muted himself because of the echo.
Sorry, we're having some connections issues here.
How about now? I got you. Yes, it is, it's, it's actually on page three, and it lists the date and the time and what item it was and where it was sent and what unit utilized that piece of equipment. And I'm sorry, was there a second part to your question?
Yeah, no, so on, it's got some more echo.
I think on the Sheriff's side, there's two people with the mics on that are feeding off each other.
So on page three of the annual report, it states the incident number, the date, the time, the bureau that used the equipment, where it was used, and the type. So it will say warrant service or training or barricaded subject, but it, I'm not seeing it list on page three, the type of equipment that was used. So my request would be that in the 2023 report, when that comes out, if we could have that added as a category.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then the second question that I have is, maybe if you mute while I speak, that would help. The report says that any cost of the additional equipment that is contemplated being added is included in the Sheriff's Office budget, but I was curious if you could elaborate on what is the anticipated cost of the additional equipment that's being anticipated?
Currently, there are no costs that are anticipated as, one, we have the equipment already, and, two, the pieces of equipment that we immediately hope to gain would be the armor or the up-armored Humvee that is actually used by another agency that would be transferred from that agency to ours.
Jason, can you go back to the page of what we're looking to potentially acquire? Put that up on the board.
Yeah, so I see that it says adding, the Sheriff's Office is contemplating adding a mobile command post, 10 identical or like existing drones, Rock Armored Caterpillar multi-terrain loader. The additional AMG Humvee is listed as being at no cost, but the report says that any additional, any other costs are included in the Sheriff's Office budget. And I'm just curious what those additional costs are anticipated to be.
Hi, Supervisor, this is Sheriff Nieto. Sorry, my computer, I have my IT guy working on it, so we had some problems relogging in after the lunch break. But anyways, the anticipated cost, we're putting that information in. It takes, because we have to be forward-thinking with this new law. So this right now, there's no cost on certain things, and when we come to the board with the reports, because we have to also accept it, then we would have all the anticipated costs with these pieces of equipment. It's really hard to play guesstimate when you don't have the equipment yet, but we, because of the way they wrote this law, we have to include these things if we're going to take or use, take possession of this equipment or use this equipment as we move forward.
Thank you for that explanation. So would it be better stated that, rather than saying that, that cost for any additional equipment is already included in the Sheriff's Office budget, that any cost would be evaluated to see if the Sheriff's Office budget can absorb it if the, if and when the Sheriff's Office actually adds or contemplates adding those items?
The, the answer would be yes and no, and I hate to sound wishy-washy because it depends on how we buy the equipment or how we budget it. If the department itself buys it, then that's a cost to the county or to the Sheriff's Office. A lot of times with our equipment, we also get it donated through our nonprofit, and so there's no cost to the, the county. There may be an operating cost, but there are some pieces of equipment, like I said, that there is no operating cost for that, except for, you know, maybe fuel, like the Humvee, or maybe maintenance if you got a Humvee.
Okay, maybe, maybe my question isn't clear. The staff report says that the cost for the contemplated additional items is included in the Sheriff's Office budget, but what I hear you saying is that we don't know at this point what the cost actually is, so I'm not sure how that could already be included in the Sheriff's Office budget.
So on, when we're looking at, like, for example, the Humvee, we're getting that through military acquisition, so that cost is a zero net cost to the, the county if we get the piece of equipment that we're looking to add. There could be maintenance costs down the road. We wouldn't know what those costs would be until we actually got the equipment. When you're, you're looking at the drones, that's already going to be written into the budget, and there's no cost to continued operations when you are looking at stuff like drones, unless it's a big drone item, but for these ones, these are smaller drones, there's no continued cost. The mobile command post, we have not got that yet. We are looking at different funding ways to get that. We anticipate, or we're trying to get something like that because the county doesn't have that. We do have one that's a county shared asset, but the Fire Department has it, not us. And so we wouldn't know what the cost would be on that one until, one, we either find funding for it through granting, or we get it donated to us, or we get it through military acquisition. So some things are written into the budget and some things just aren't. You know, I'm sorry that the ordinance or the law is written very badly, but we have to include these things if we want to add these things as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. No, I understand that you have to list them out. I'm just trying to understand what the cost is, and I'm, I'm still not getting a clear answer, but those were my questions, thank you.
I think mostly on vehicles, it's operations and maintenance, so, and then it goes with any vehicle that the Planet County acquires. Hard to figure out what, what that is year to year. Other questions or comments, Board? See none, let's go to-
My hand is up?
Adam, oh, yes, our clerk just told me that. So go ahead, Supervisor Adams.
Thank you. So I'm interested in the Rook Armored Caterpillar multi-terrain loader, and I'm, I assume that that was used at the Paharo event. And I'm just wondering if you can tell me, is that, other than that event, has that, that equipment been deployed at all?
Supervisor Adams, no, the Rook is not used at the Paharo. A Rook is actually an armored vehicle that has a claw attachment on it, because it grabs things and pulls things. For example, on our shooting that we had back in September, if we did not have a Rook vehicle, if we had a Rook, we would have been able to have different ways to possibly end the situation without any tragic loss of life. So this is a, it's not a military piece of equipment, it's actually a police piece of equipment, and that's just what they call it. So think of it as a, a tractor with a arm on it that can pull things apart.
I was picturing them pulling people off roofs, but clearly that was not quite the, quite the idea. So the kinds of incidents, then, you, we've not used this thing because we don't have it yet, right?
No, we, we do not, and sorry, there's a delay. We have to keep unmuting every time we speak.
Okay, so I've got another question for you then. Can you give me an example of, of, other than the one that you quickly mentioned, what kind of incidents would this be used for, and how frequently would you imagine needing it?
This, this would be used for armed and barricaded suspects, and hopefully we never use it, and it's few and far between if we do use it. However, when you need it, you need it, and it could save lives.
Can I add to the Sheriff, what Sheriff's saying? This would be an item that we would be seeking grant funding for when, when that time comes to get a grant to fund that cost or reduce the potential costs to the county budget if, if there had to be some costs. And it did, it could be used as a local asset, a regional asset as well to support municipalities in the area. It also has purpose during, you know, we found based on the call that it could be something we could deploy during inclement storms and, and weather-related incidents in the county to support public works with the removal of debris. It's a tracked vehicle, so it's on track, so it could remove debris or pull things to clear obstructions as well. So that's another asset that we, we've looked at.
And Supervisor, I'm learning that in the future, when we, next year, when we come forward with our report, we're going to include pictures.
I think there was a picture of the, the Rook. But at any rate, you've answered my questions, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. We'll go to the members of the public now. Any comments on this item? We'll start with those in chambers and then go to those online. And for the Sheriff's Department, I think if there's a laptop or a phone being used in the same room, it, it provides that feedback, and that's where you get, you get that echo. So only one, one of those items has, devices has to be turned off so that there's only one mic using audio.
Supervisor, this is Sheriff Nieto. We, we don't have that going on on our end.
We're in three rooms.
Yeah, we're in different rooms, and we're not close.
Well, it must, it's another problem then. Thank you. All right, let's go to the first member of the public, go ahead.
Okay, so, good afternoon, Supervisor, I'm Eloise Shim, and I do want to comment about this Assembly Bill 481 says that it's determining that the public's welfare, safety, civil rights, and civil liberties will be helped by this military equipment. However, there are people from the ACLU who are questioning even license plate readers in terms of violating their civil liberties. And the NDSA, the National Security Agency, is now wanting to reinstate Section 702, which will allow them to surveil, surveil call records and other kinds of internet records, and that will go down to any local law enforcement. So that impacts immigrants, Arabs, Muslims, you know, the same kind of thing where, where the FBI infiltrated mosques and things before. This, this kind of technology, and I know in Salinas, they have a dedicated vehicle which is ostensibly for people who are internet predators, sexual predators, where they can access your private information already. So, you know, this really does, it, it's not safe for the civil rights and civil liberties. You can access people's sensitive private information.
Thank you. That's not a subject to this, this is only regarding the military equipment under this particular Assembly Bill. So, but nonetheless, I'll let you continue to comment on it. Any other, anybody else in chambers, anybody else online? See none, we'll bring this back to the Board for motion or discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Moved by Church, seconded by Lopez. If there's no further discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye. Oh, we have to do roll call because now Supervisor Adams has joined us, so let's do roll call.
Supervisor Church?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Askew? Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Lejo?
Aye, motion carries 5-0. We are on item number 25 on the agenda. This is to receive a presentation on the operations and outcomes of the Sheriff's Center, a low-barrier emergency shelter and housing navigation center for individuals and families located right here in Salinas. And to present, we have Alex Soltero, Management Analyst II, and Laura, Lauren Tuanzupa, Community Affiliation Manager. Just you then.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Board. I can bring up our presentation here. Aye, this one, thank you.
On Zoom? Okay, we'll, we'll make sure that we add them. Thank you, representatives from the Bay Area Community Services. And we appreciate this, towards the end of the year, another good year of service here at the Sheriff's Center.
Absolutely, thank you so much. And just to, you know, to also share, Bax will be doing a tandem presentation with the Salinas City Council to provide the update for, for them as well. So just to provide a bit of an update on our service goals and outcomes from fiscal year '22, '23. Just some background, the Sheriff's Center, the Salinas Housing Advancement Resource and Education Navigation Center located at 845 East Laurel, is a partnership that the County of Monterey operates with the City of Salinas to provide ongoing full-service navigation center for homeless men, women, and families. We received $6 million in heat funding back in 2019, and have been operational since 2021. And I'm going to introduce Jamisha Baker, the Associate Program Director, sorry, Program Director, and Gary Tia, Associate Program Director, to go into some details and provide that update about the Sheriff's Center. Gary and Jamisha, are you there? Were they able to get panel? Okay.
Thank you, I'm, I'm here, sorry about that. As soon as I accepted panel access, it kind of rebooted everything on my end. Nice to see you all this afternoon. Gary, are you able to say hello?
Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you, thank you for having us. Let's see. And I can't see if we are still, if we still have the slides up, it looks like we do.
They do, and I got you, Jamisha, just let me know, okay?
Perfect, okay. So thanks again for having us here today. I am Jamisha Baker, as mentioned, the Program Director with Bay Area Community Services, and today we're just going to quickly go over some of the items that we'll be discussing today with you all. So first, we're going to start with the introduction to Team Salinas. We'll also cover the referrals and operations for the Sheriff's Center, client demographics information, service connections, housing partnerships, and community support. And then we'll close things out with client success stories and any questions that you all may have. Next slide, please. Okay, so when we talk about the Team Salinas, we wanted to give everyone a quick recap of who our staff are and what happens on operations as far as who's included on the staffing for the Sheriff's Center. So we have a Program Manager, this is actually Gary Tia's name is listed here, who was our Associate Director, but he was the Acting Program Manager. Now, the update to that is that Desiree Moore is actually the Program Manager. We also have on the team a Property Supervisor that handles all the day-to-day maintenance and issues related to things that come up on operations. We have 12 residential counselors, and their responsibility is 24/7 safety and care coordination support for participants, as well as monitoring things with the site and collaboration with the Property Supervisor and the Program Manager. And then we have the Care Coordinator staff who offer those care coordination services to our clients during the daytime. They work in collaboration with the residential coun, counselors in partnership to address any housing barriers, docs readiness, which is getting the documents for housing opportunities, and any other things that may came, come up that can prevent folks from being ready for housing. And then last but not least, we have an Employment Coordinator on the team who focuses on building relationships in the community with employers, bridging those gaps with training and employment opportunities, employment readiness, and also employment care coordination. Next slide, please. Well, next, we're going to talk a little bit about the referral and enrollment process and how folks are able to come in to the services at the Sheriff's Center. So first off, any community member or a case manager is able to refer participants to the Sheriff's Center by either contacting the Sheriff's Center staff by telephone or by doing so via email to just let us know that they are interested in being placed on the waitlist. So the next step to that is that the community member is then contacted when space is available, and we do go in order of folks being listed on that waitlist. And once we contact them, we do make several contact attempts because we understand that there are challenges with having accessibility to phone and email. So we'll make multiple contact attempts to try to get folks connected to our services. And if we're able to do that, what happens next is that we offer that space to the participant and their household, and if they accept it, then the next step is to schedule an intake with our residential counselor team. And then upon that, the community member will complete the intake. They will go through all of the program information, all of those things that they need to know on their end, and just all of our community agreements and the services that they'll receive. And then once that is completed, the community member is officially enrolled into the program, and that's where those care coordination services begin. And that's where those care coordination services begin. And I know you hear me talk a lot about care coordination, which we'll talk a little bit more about later. But that has a lot to do with the success that we've seen in the program. Next slide, please. And so up next, we'll talk a little bit about the general operations at the Share Center. And as you can see on this slide, we have some beautiful photos of some of our participants that especially the ones with the children, which we love here. And our current census at the time that we put this slide deck together had 83 individuals that were enrolled at the Share Center. During this time, we had folks that were moving in and out, of course, too. And we'll talk a little bit more about those services for housing soon. We had 22 men enrolled, 14 women, and a total of 47 families with 24 children in that family count. So that's a pretty tremendous support to the Monterey County community, especially folks in Salinas. And so the other information that we wanted to share, which is very unique for interim housing programs like the Share Center, is that we also had a pet census, which tells you the number of pets that we had at the Share Center. There were a total of eight pets. We had five dogs at the time, one cat, and two birds. And to date, we actually had 40 pets and counting that were served, which is very unique. And I know that there are some folks who traditionally will see programs like the Share Center not allow pets. But we know that pets are also a part of our participants' families. And we welcome them and make sure that they have all the services and needs as far as vet care, different types of kenneling and enclosures and resources so that their pets are also happy and safe, just like their human family members are. So at the time when this slide deck was put together, there were a total of 502 folks waiting on the referral and waitlist to come into the Share Center. And this, of course, is updated often. And this just tells you the great need that the community has for the services that are being offered at the program. Next slide, please. And the next part that we're going to talk more about is the client demographics. So the demographics that the information is that you'll see here will definitely give you more of a capture in a picture of who's actually enrolling into the program. And we thought it would be helpful for you to know that some of the most commonly served age groups, 19% of those folks that are served by the Share Center are ages five years to 12 years old. So a majority of the folks that we're serving here are children. 17% of them are aged 35 to 44, and 14% are aged 25 to 34 years old. So when we look at the race breakdown of the clients that have been enrolled in the Share Center, a majority of them identify as white. The most common secondary part of that population is black or African American. And then Asian American, there were, that was probably one of our smaller, more seen groups in the Share Center services. And then American Indian or indigenous was also one of the smaller groups, but a little more higher prevalent than the Asian population. And then Native American, excuse me, Native Hawaiian and/or Pacific Islander was one of the smaller groups that we saw in our services. And then we did have folks who identified as, you know, having multiple races in their backgrounds. And then we had just a few folks that chose not to share that information. But as you can see, this really helps give you a good capture of who is being served and who, and out of all of them, most of them are children. So that's another important thing to point out. Next slide, please.
Just a quick question on that, because I didn't see the Latinos broken out. Because often in the census, Latinos could be of various different races, but ethnicity. Do you have any data on that?
Sure, go ahead, Gary.
So the, the one is a skewed data point because in HMIS, which is the Homeless Management Information System, there isn't a category for Latino. That, that is, so there is an ethnicity portion that we can start to break down. But the majority of the population that we're serving there are Latino. It's just, it's skewed in with how the HUD data is reported. And so there isn't a category for Latino yet. I know we're pushing to have that category in there. But they have an ethnicity category where you can identify as Latino or non-Latino. And we can, we can provide that information later on. But that's how, that's why it is the way it is. And categorizing everyone as white when it really is Latino.
Latino.
Exactly. Thank you.
There is one other thing I wanted to mention, too, that this, there is an pending update to what Gary mentioned around the demographics of who folks actually are identifying in more detail. But that has been a challenge for a number of years in homeless services throughout all jurisdictions, but not being able to capture that specific information. So the changes are coming, but you know, for now, we're also tracking things on our end so that we can identify the breakdown. But for HMIS, as Gary said, it does have some limitations. Okay, we can go to the next slide. So this information on this slide covers the average length of stay for participants in the Share Center program. And this is just important to really see how long folks are staying enrolled in the program before they are exiting into housing. So a lot of what you'll see here is that a majority of the folks, half of them, stayed at the program for 181 days to an entire year, right? So this really speaks to the amount of work that our staff is doing to prepare folks for housing. And it can vary, as you can see on the other side of this graph, that some folks only stayed for less than 30 days, while there were others who stayed for 31 to 60 days. And then folks who stayed from 61 to 90 days. And then there were other folks who stayed 91 to 180 days. So it is a mix, but most, for the most part, it takes most people 181 days to 365 days to exit as of now. This, of course, can shift as we have folks come in that have different situations and different housing barriers that take either less or sometimes even more time before they're ready for housing.
And I think that on average, we're seeing that it really is about seven months it takes to house somebody. From, from, from day one to leaving, we're averaging about seven months.
Yeah. I think it's also important for us to talk about some of the contributing factors about the length of stay for our participants. A lot of the folks that we're serving at the Share Center, around 15% of them are undocumented participants. A lot of them have the disabilities and are retired seniors, as well as having some severe mental health challenges or a long history of chronic homelessness also contributes to the amount of time that folks would need to remain in the program. So we really try to make sure we do our best to practice the housing-first model and meet participants where their needs are and target our care coordination based on what services that they have not been connected to for a long period of time so that we're able to address those challenges all the while focusing on getting them into housing permanently. Next slide, please. So the service connections piece, which is really important to highlight here as well. The total number of individuals and family members that we've served to date is, this is definitely older information. I can say with certainty that we're well over 400 participants that we've served because this data is from last fiscal year. But that's quite a bit of folks that we've served in the community. And it's been amazing for us to really partner with our participants and support them in their housing journey as well as after. And for the fiscal year 22, 23, there were, out of all of these participants, there were 121 exits to permanent housing destinations, which is a huge win for the program and also for the region. There were 13 exits to short-term housing destinations, which means that sometimes folks are exiting to places to address a different need, maybe at a hospital, maybe at a care facility, or maybe they're staying temporarily with a friend or a family member until they are able to move into a permanent housing destination. But as you can see, most of our exits are to permanent housing destinations, which is where a participant can stay as long as they choose to, which is really what the goal is for the program. Next slide, please. So service connections, this is a big piece of our work, really making sure that we have co-located services at the site for our participants, including for our children. And as you can see, one of the big service connections that we worked on over the time that we've been at the Share Center is the after-school tutoring with the Monterey County Office of Education, partnerships with the MCOE and Dr. Donna Smith, tutoring the kids, teens, and also young adults, and having activities for children at the site, as well as English tutoring for adults. That's been very helpful for our participants. And then, as we talked about, our animals that are fur family members that are also enrolled at the Share Center. We partner with the VCA, All Pets Animal Hospital, SPCA in Monterey County, and Peace of Mind Dog Rescue. We've done welcome bags, kits, and we've supported our participants with spay and neuter appointments, vaccinations, grooming, behavioral training, kennel training, and also financial assistance and transportation assistance when there are certain medical needs that have to be met outside of the program. And one of the innovative things that you'll see if you're ever able to visit the Share Center is that there is space for animals to get exercise. There's space for them to safely kennel during the evening hours. You'll see that we have birds in the milieu, we have cats that are able to lounge about and also get connected to much-needed services while their family members are enrolled in the program. And some of the other service connections that we've had at the Share Center is Nativity Dodge Medical Center, Salinas Valley Memorial, having those clinic operations support our participants that have those medical needs that need to be addressed. Young people in recovery, holding those weekly and monthly Zoom meetings with our participants. MVAO, which helps with that veteran support. And YHDP, which is our Transitional Age Youth Homeless Services for folks that are experiencing homelessness and getting our youth connected right over to those services as we see a need that needs to be supported. And then the Coke Farm, helping us with those fresh organic fruits and veggies so that our participants can really help get things started on that healthy eating journey as they move into their own housing situation. Next slide, please. Now, the housing partnership, this is where the other work happens for us, too, for our team at the Share Center. BACS uses a service model that works on quickly focusing, on quickly addressing housing barriers while exploring those partnerships with landlords and property management companies. And this is really what our bread and butter is and how we've been able to house so many folks during the time that we've operated at the Share Center. Housing connections are based on the participant's income and their individual housing needs. There is no cookie cutter approach. We're really looking at where folks want to live, what their income is now, what their potential income is later, and if they need to live near public transportation or if there's certain areas they can or cannot live in, we really identify that. And we try to locate a housing opportunity that meets those needs. And then aftercare services are offered to support housing sustainability, which reduces returns to the system. And that really helps continue that partnership that we've developed with the participant when they were enrolled in the program. And that aftercare is just us meeting with them to cover anything that may come up and supporting them in their, their new home. Because it can be really challenging for folks who have been unhoused for even a short period of time to have the responsibility of living on their own again. And we really want to make sure that we bridge any of those service gaps by continuing to provide those services long-term for folks. And to date, BACS has partnered with over 40 landlords and property managers.
Excuse me. Excuse me, you like blanked out for like a quick minute. I think we had all the power go out here at the Government Center. So we missed like the last minute. So if you're able to retract just a bit.
I got you covered. Okay, so we were talking about our housing partnerships. And we were talking about how we quickly, we focus on quickly addressing the housing barriers that our participants have while we're also working on our partnerships with landlords and property managers. And that's definitely using that, that housing-first model. Housing connections are also based on the participant's income and their individual housing needs. So for example, if they want to live in a certain city near a certain public transportation in the region, we're going to support them in doing that while also making sure that the housing is sustainable once that financial assistance ends. So one of the other great things that our team is doing is offering what we call aftercare services, which helps support the participant once they move into housing, which supports that housing sustainability and also reduces the returns to the homelessness services system. And to date, our team has partnered with over 40 landlords and property managers to house our participants at the Share Center.
If I could add to that real quick, our aftercare has been very active. And we've been experienced a lot of individuals losing their jobs and needing some support, additional support for like a month or a month and a half to can get back on their feet. As you know, the ag, ag department, you know, the, it's seasonal. So sometimes people will lose employment during those times and will request additional support. So it's very crucial for us to be implementing that aftercare portion where we're really helping people maintain and not return to recidivism and be back on the streets because they're losing their job. Or, or you know, sometimes we're all just one financial crisis away, car breaks down, medical appointment, whatever. So we're trying to follow them up to a year and sometimes a little bit over a year to make sure that they're maintaining their housing.
Yes, and one other thing I wanted to add to, and a huge shout out to Gary on this. Our team was able to develop a partnership with Town and Country Realty and the Cambridge Court Apartments, where we were able to house a number of our participants. And that's where we really see the success in this work, when there's that partnership between property managers and landlords in the region to, to house folks who have even a short-term or chronic homelessness in their past. That's how we're really able to push things forward. And that's, that's the success that we see in this program. Next slide, please. So employment services also plays a major role. What we do is each participant, regardless of whatever their background is or their employment status or history is, we always evaluate if they are interested in employment services or increasing their income or even training and education services. So to date, our team has been able to support 36 employment placements. And that was at the time that this was put together. We've done a great job at having onsite services available for training and education, resume preparation, application support, interview readiness, career counseling, job development. And we had a really amazing job fair last year at the Share Center that did a wonderful job at connecting folks with employers and putting employers in front of them in the setting that is a little bit more comfortable because it's their short-term home. So some of the great connections that we've seen are also listed on this slide. Macy's, Bay Federal Credit Union, Chase Bank, GameStop, Downtown Streets Team, and a number of other employers in the area we've built partnerships with to really make those connections to support housing sustainability for our participants. Next slide, please. I think we're doing good on the power now, right?
Yes, we are.
Okay, just checking before we go into this. And then this slide is really just summarizing the, the level of support that we've received from the region. All of these partners have played a huge role in the services that we offer to the community partners. Victory Mission, who provides meals at our program each and every day to our participants. And they do an amazing job with that. The Food Bank, really partnering with us to utilize those resources for our participants. The City of Salinas and the Monterey County Department of Social Services. There are so many folks that are listed on this slide. But as you can see, there is a lot of work and partnership being done to support our unhoused community members when they enroll into the program. And this is just some of those partnerships that we've developed to support our community members. There are so many more. We would need much more slides and time available to be able to share that with you all today. Next slide, please. And one of our favorite things, I want Gary to talk about this. Gary, if you can hear me, would you like to cover the client success stories piece for us?
Yeah, I think that that was one of the big things. I think one thing that Jamisha mentioned earlier is that a huge percentage of the people that we're serving are children, which means that families has been one of the biggest needs. And I think that these two families were great stories of success. The Johnson family, it was a family of six. And it's very difficult to house families, especially with the current going of market rate for different homes. I mean, sometimes it's, it's, they're charging like 3,000 to 3,500 just for like a, a three-bedroom or so. You know, like the, the prices get up there. So definitely with working and getting vouchers for individuals was a big support. I definitely loved working with the Johnson family. I hung out with them often in the milieu, ate meals with them, talked with them about their situations, and just very happy that they were. and just very happy that they were able to get a place for themselves. Loved the the quote that they shared where they were just saying, you know, I'm immensely grateful for the share center. Ebed also said, I only wish I had known about this program sooner. And the Martinez family, which was a very heartwarming situation where Mr. Martinez lost his wife. And we were able to to help him get the support he needed and into a great permanent housing opportunity. I think he got into like a three-bedroom home for him. So these are just two of many successes that we've had. I think we started off this fiscal year very well. Everything we're reporting on was last fiscal year. But in the month of July, just starting this fiscal year, we were able to house twenty-three people in that month alone. So that the the successes that are happening are definitely a like in in contribution to what everyone has been doing to help out at the share. So all the support that we've received from Monterey County DSS, from board supervisors, and also all help in really helping people realize their dreams of getting off the streets and into their own their own place. And we're really grateful for all the support that we receive.
Thank you, Gary. Well said. So the next slide is just real quick and easy. Thank you for your time today. Thank you for bearing with us through any technical issues. I'm so glad we got back online. We wanted to leave space for any questions that folks may have for us.
Thank you very much for the presentation and all the good work the share staff are doing and our social services. The City of Salinas, who I know has also been closely in touch with BACS just on the day-to-day and checking in on how our folks are doing, who are benefiting from this program. For me, I see it as a real success story. But just on the presentation, though, on the program exits, the on the slide that said one hundred and twenty-one exits, it's hit for twenty-two, twenty-three. Is there more in twenty-twenty-one that we're not capturing? Because I think I think an important part of our job in addressing homelessness is to tell the full story, right? And I like to tell the county residents that since the share center opened, what is that total number of people who have been put into permanent housing, short-term housing? I think the employment, I think that was accurate with the thirty-six, I believe it was, place into employment. But is is there more numbers there that that are not being captured here? Because the reason I say that is because when we fought to open the share center, there was a lot of community resistance. So now that it's open and we haven't seen the complaints or the concerns that came up during those town halls, it's now incumbent every year to tell the public, how are we doing? How is this share center helping our residents get into employment and into permanent housing or 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 short-term housing? All those numbers are critical. So I'm just, the question is, is there more data that is not included that we could just tell the full story for that additional year? Not captured here.
I can answer that supervisor.
Yes, please.
So the first fiscal year that we reported, we moved eighty-seven people to permanent housing. So that was just, we're just reporting on what we did last year.
Right.
So I think in total, it would be eighty-seven plus what we had on the screen there.
Okay, great. And maybe just adding both say the cumulative since share center opened and then the previous year for future presentations. Because I know, I know when I go speak at the Monterey County Business Council, I give a report on the share center. And I always try to give the latest numbers to tell the business community, how has this share center helped residents not go into homelessness, actually get into housing and into jobs, which is a very powerful thing for our families and really carrying out the the vision and the goals of having this kind of a navigation center in in Monterey County. I think it's a true success story and I want to commend your staff for the work. On on another side, though, has there been any changes staff-wise? I know there was some in-house changes there. Maybe you just want to address that because we always try to get the most professional staff to serve our population. I know Jesse has been there for quite some time, but maybe just speak to that in terms of 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 always needing to get the the best staff with the best training to be able to work and be most effective with our homeless, residents facing homelessness, our unhoused population.
Yes, one other thing I wanted to add to about the previous question you had is that we've also shared a annual report with the city and the county that also includes all of those numbers to date for housing, permanent housing exits and just the program information. So in regards to the staffing, we do have a program manager that was recently transferred from one of our other programs. It has been pretty steady as far as the senior leadership team. We've had some some changes on some of our frontline staff and one of our leadership staff recently changed as well. But it is sometimes a common occurrence to have challenges with some of the staffing when it comes to this type of work. We are very selective in who we we choose to run services as well as our frontline staff. All of our staff go through extensive training and in development to prepare them for adhering to the cert, the model of services and just our philosophy that we hold tightly here at BACS. But we have an amazing program manager who I mentioned earlier in the presentation, Desiree Mora, who has a long-term experience in homeless services and also so social services. And we also have a few of our care coordinators who have a background that are newly hired in social services and psychology. So that has been a tremendous help in ensuring that our care coordination standards are constantly being met for our participants and that we're also addressing any of the needs that are presented to to our team while folks are enrolled in the program. So we also have very high expectations and sometimes it can be challenging. We are a little nitpicky about things when it comes to recruiting, but that's to the the greater good of the services that our participants need. And this work is not always for everyone, but we do our best to make sure that we're preparing folks to do it, that we hold very high standards in that and that those standards are being met at all times.
Thank you for very much for that, Ms. Pick. I want to say that because I know this work is not easy. And I think having oversight and when complaints come up, to be able to address them and always trying to have the highest standards for our staff is an important one. I think I know the county shares that, our Department of Social Services shares that. And so I appreciate being able to address those issues when they do come up and to making sure that we're providing that oversight of these programs, the services, and making sure we we're delivering the most professional services to these residents who are in the most vulnerable situations in their lives. I have other questions, but I know Supervisor Adams has raised her hand before I go to other colleagues here in chambers. Supervisor Adams, go ahead.
Thank you. I just can't tell you how thrilled I am by the report that you've provided for us today. I had the opportunity to tour the center when it was first open and I was very happy that the board had agreed that we would go with BACS as the provider. And honestly, you've not let us down at all. I'm just really thrilled with the results. And as I say, I do not have any idea how you're getting the housing that you are. I mean, you know, people who are, you know, with running a job or a business aren't able to find rental properties here. So I, once again, congratulations on that. I do have a couple of questions and one I wanted to know, if you can tell me, what, do you have a waitlist and what is about the size of that?
And we mentioned earlier in the slide deck, sorry, because I know it's so much information to to cover. That's why we tried to make it as light as possible. But we do have a waitlist and folks are able to be either self-refer by contacting the center directly or they could have their case manager or social worker contact us. And Gary, do you have information on where we're at? Because when we did this slide, there were over, a little over five hundred households that were on the waitlist. This, of course, can change from time to time, especially if we've been unable to reach folks after multiple contact attempts.
Yeah, let me pull it up right now.
Okay, thank you.
But it's pretty much the same of the five hundred two, it's probably a little bit more than five hundred right now. I think the last time I checked, there was like over three hundred or family referrals that were.
Five hundred and fourteen.
There it is.
Yeah, and we tried our our best to, go ahead, Gary.
That's not including family size. That's not including children, that's just head of households.
Holy wow. You've got another whole city going out there. And I'm just wondering, have there been any conversations in which you've been a part that talks about what we need to do as far as addressing this? Is there the, I guess I should be speaking to my colleagues, the capacity for us to replicate the share center, you know, here in, you know, in our county? If that's something that there would be an appetite for, both from the board's perspective as well as the community's perspective. But when we're talking about the success that you're having and then this unbelievable number of people who are just standing there waiting, it would be wonderful if we would be able to replicate the program and and do something to help those people get off the waiting list and into the housing that that they need.
Yeah, we will leave that up to folks on the Monterey County side to answer for us to see what their thoughts are. We can say, we see there's a need, right? And as we mentioned from the slides, a majority of the folks that we're serving are families. There, there's definitely a need for more services for families in the region because most of the folks on our, in our programs are children. So I'll I'll let the the folks from the county also speak to whether or not this is something that's possible, but we know there's a need.
We'll go to Lauren.
Thank you, Supervisor Adams, for bringing that up. You know, the demand for availability of shelter beds for families is frankly tragic in our community. It's it's very difficult for us to be able to immediately reposition a displaced family into emergency shelter. And we can see this in, you know, efforts have been made within on the Monterey Peninsula area, Community Human Services, opening and operating two shelters that are really driven towards the need of of single women or families. The Casa Noche Buena in Seaside, as well as the new one, Schuman Hart House. And and having more opportunities for that is absolutely a need. We'll also, you know, I think the challenges come in identifying funding that really supports that front-end need. So much of the funding that's been coming available at the state level has been focused on the backend and the building of permanent units and in trying to transition and invest in that direction. But it doesn't negate, that is a huge need.
The interim. Thank you. Thanks very much, Lauren. Great job. Honestly, thank you.
Yep, okay, let's go to the members. So Supervisor Church.
Thank you for this great presentation and the great work and program that's being done. You know, I find it really refreshing to see pets being allowed in here. You know, I think of cases, and this may not be, you know, like this Martinez family, which you referred to, lost her home, his kids lost their mother, I don't know if they have a pet or not. But in a case like that, for a family then to have to go into a shelter and not have an animal is, animals are just really important to kids. Sometimes they're their closest friends and and just to see that you've you've been able to accommodate that, I think, is is extremely, extremely important. I am, you know, looking at the list there of 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 how many people have been or been, how long they've been there, for example. We don't have anybody over three hundred sixty-five days. Is that the maximum?
There is no maximum amount of time that folks are able to be in the program. As we talked about earlier, this is, we don't use the cookie cutter approach to supporting our unhoused community members. We will adjust services as we see needed. If folks need to stay longer than a year, they stay longer than a year. We've had some people who have stayed longer than a year because there are sometimes housing barriers that require them to stay a little longer than others. So there is no specified end date to services. As long as participants are working with us and meeting with us and in partnership towards their housing goals and to achieve their housing journey, success, then we're we're going to continue to work with them. There's no ceiling.
My other question is, and you know, when, you know, one of the, the slide came up and showed five hundred and two two people on the waiting list and we updated to five fourteen. I thought that was people, actually, and I was here, that's households, basically, head of households. So that's a lot more individually than five hundred and fourteen. Are the three hundred ninety-seven that have been served, is that head of households or is that totals of of individuals?
That's also head of households, but we can, I don't know if Gary wants to comment more about additional details on that, but it always goes based on the number of head of households.
Okay, yeah, I'm glad to hear that because that means you've you've taken care of a lot of people, more than three ninety-seven. And I I think this is a great success, it's a great program. I wish we could have multiple, multiple of these houses around. And I I second Supervisor Adams' support for that idea.
Supervisor Lopez and Supervisor Askew.
Just appreciation, I know that getting to this point was not easy. It's easy to look back now and say, oh, we need to do more. But citing the fights with the community, where this was going to end up, I want to appreciate everyone who took a tough stand and said, this is what needs to happen for every single member of our community who deserves it. These families deserve this care. And we know there's five hundred more families that deserve it as well. So I just want to continue to thank BACS for being a partner because at every turn, when there's been a need for assistance, they've stepped up as well. I know often for us coming out of South County, I have folks who will not leave South County as much as we try to say, you know, there's a resource and it's not the endpoint, it's a start point to a new life or expansion or improvement of your life. They've always been unwilling to reach out to those families and offer more. And so as we continue to do our part in South County, specifically dealing with the single individuals, with the resources that we're bringing online in King City and hoping that more of our cities down south take on more of that challenge with us, just want to thank BACS for what they've done to this point and look forward to continuing that partnership.
Thank you, Supervisor Askew.
Thank you for the report and I'll echo the comments of my colleagues and the appreciation and the recognition that these programs and these services and these locations really are, and the success that we're hearing about today is indicative of leadership that has been pushing really hard and taking really bold positions and being willing to to lean in to solutions, even when those solutions are complex and complicated and controversial. So just, just again, that that recognition. The questions I have for BACS, and as as one of the newer service providers in our community, we have a number of different, one of the challenges that we hear often from people is when you're in crisis and you're trying to navigate housing, shelter, emergency services, you don't have maybe a permanent address to work with, you're you're in crisis. And we we give people sort of this list of phone numbers, call these fourteen different places because maybe one of these shelters might have space for you and then get on these twenty-seven different waiting lists for permanent supportive housing or for subsidized affordable housing. Go to this location, go to that location and make sure you respond every time anyone calls you or you change your address. Are there suggestions that you see working in other communities where we can collectively come together to make it easier for our residents who are in crisis to be able to get shelter by making one phone call? Is there a path that we can can work towards coordination, improved coordination? I don't know about that for county staff, but also I'm interested in hearing from BACS what it's been like coming into this community.
I can, I can start with, you know, the the perspectives of, you know, just coming from like the big picture and looking at, you know, how we're coordinating services. I really just kind of want to put that shout out really into the emphasis and the the power that we have, you know, with outreach teams. And being able to utilize both the CSU MBHA as well as Salinas's own SORT team has just really been invaluable of the way that we're able to provide that connection in the field, meet people where they're at. And these outreach workers are following the individuals, you know, throughout the course of the time they may be on a waitlist. So while that is not ideal, we would love for them to be directly able to move into immediate shelter. Having that outreach worker has just been invaluable of what it is their time up on on to come into the shelter that an outreach worker almost knows exactly where to find them and can help kind of navigate, let me go out and look for them in the community if you can't get ahold of them to try and make sure that they don't lose out on that opportunity. And so, you know, being able to have these teams has really been a game changer for for our community and being able to really swiftly utilize knowledgeable people who are building relationships with with people who are trying to get into these programs and acting as that that helping hand, that navigator through multiple service providers, multiple waitlists and can actually do that direct referral. service providers, um, multiple waitlists and can actually do that direct referral to the program. So BACS is able to accept those referrals directly from outreach team workers, um, and a, and just help with that process, help them navigate some of those hoops. I'll let, um, Jimmy Schur or, um, Gary provide an update or, um, perspectives from the operator.
Yeah, I, I, I think that in coming to Monterey County, we had to learn kind of the way things are done out there and get more familiar with the coalition, uh, homeless services. I think that in other jurisdictions, coordinated entry is one of the biggest, uh, interventions that is used to house or, or get people into shelters that are super vulnerable. So for those of you who know what coordinated entry is or, or doesn't know what coordinated entry is, coordinated entry is, um, it's a process of, uh, assessing individuals' vulnerability and those who score the highest on most vulnerable get, uh, get placed into shelters, uh, immediately. And we have, there's like different, uh, degrees of how like vulnerable someone is and what type of interventions would be the best approach for them. Uh, in order for us to get more familiar with how it's been in Monterey County, but in, in another, in other jurisdictions, like I'm in Concha Costa County right now and Jamisha's in Alameda County right now, um, they have a very robust coordinated entry system. So in order for us to integrate into, uh, Monterey County, uh, we've been sitting on different boards. I recently have volunteered to help kind of co-chair the coordinated entry and CARs assessment. So I'm working with Oliver on that, you know, trying to do what we can to get that, that up and going and, and become like a very strong way to help refer people and, because as of right now, coordinated entry doesn't hold beds per se at shelters, or they do it like interim, but not at like all the shelters. Whereas in different counties, like coordinated entry will have like 10 beds at this center, 10 beds at that center. And when it becomes, if something happens, though, you know, i- if someone needs placement immediately, we do the assessment and if they're scoring that high, we can plug them in and match them to the, to the, the type of intervention that's needed. I hope that, that answers the question.
Yeah, so I guess, are you saying that there's room for improvement with our coordinated entry, um, process?
Yes.
We are currently engaged.
Okay.
Yeah, we are engaged in overhauling our car, our local coordinated entry system.
We're working on it. We're all working on it.
Okay. Great. I think, I think one of the benefits of bringing CARs in is that, you know, and I know we have a, we have a really tight knit group of service providers, um, who's been working, who have been working, um, incredibly, uh, hard, uh, for many, many years. Um, and it's hard to invite and welcome in a whole new organization and figure out how to work together, but, um, I do appreciate the sort of added perspective that, that you've been able to bring, um, and the experience, um, from other communities, uh, to help us, uh, continually improve, um, our systems because it is, it is complicated to navigate. We, we are doing good work here, but the needs are so much greater than what, um, we currently have in place. And so I appreciate the presentation today, appreciate the work that you're doing, uh, here in Monterey County and, uh, look forward to hearing, um, ongoing suggestions about how we can, um, expand, improve, uh, and better coordinate the, the limited resources that we have to meet needs for, for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we're going to go to the public. Do any members of the public want to comment on this presentation by Bay Area Community Services? One person coming forward? Anybody online?
Okay, so, um, I'm Eloise Shim and, um, I just wanted to comment that I, I am in, um, housing now, but the Housing Authority, um, which I guess works in con- in concert with these kinds of homeless, uh, providers, um, they, without my permission, gave my application to CHISP. And then somebody from CHISP asked me if, you know, I wanted to move in East Garrison. And I have a problem, I think it's really presumptuous of these people, these housing people, to sort of like manipulate and relocate people and give their personal information to other housing, uh, um, entities. So I have a big problem with that. I don't want anybody, you know, trying to relocate me from where I am. So there, there needs to be some coordination so that people aren't presumptuous and aggressive and, and taking people's, um, manipulating them and relocating them.
Anyone else? Not seeing any more public comments, then we'll just bring this back. Um, the only, uh, last thing I would add, I wish we could, we had more resources, money is limited and as Lauren rightly pointed out, a lot of the state money is geared towards building those permanent supportive housing units, right? The hotel conversions or other types of housing for our low income, uh, home, slash homeless residents that it doesn't necessarily fund these, these types of shelters that are the safety net. Um, the other thing that we lack is sometimes is political will. This seems, and I, and I, I appreciate Supervisor Lopez saying because everybody seems, oh, great, it's doing good things, we're putting two people into housing and jobs, but when this, when, when, prior to the Share Center being built, we had the temporary shelter at the old Scissor Building at the rail yard, then at the Public Defender's Office, both of those with a lot of opposition. And then when we had the Share Center Town Halls, a lot of opposition from the public as well. There was a lot of scaring and fanning of the flames and, and we were yelled at, um, frankly. Um, but, but the reason I, I think it's important to put that into context is that when we designed this Share Center, um, to address a lot of needs, including the pets, um, we also put gating around it, we also put cameras, we also, we did all those things intentionally so that we could ameliorate in advance any of those concerns from the public and that's why we haven't seen any complaints coming from the Share Center. There's other, uh, homeless encampments in the area, some that have now been cleared. It's like night and day, the, the, the encampment resolution dollars that have been used to clear out Car Lake and clear out the vegetation. It's a 100% improvement, but I think that's what we need. These things are not easy, but when we do build them, let's manage them right, operate them right. BACS is a perfect example of a good operator, um, because then when we have the next project, we want to show we can do these projects right, so in our community. Last thing I, I would just say is that I was there at, um, last week at the Share Center, um, coordinated with the BACS team to hopefully once again do a Christmas, um, backpack and winter clothing drive for the children of the Share Center. We have between 30 and 40, uh, kids staying there, so I want to just invite the public that we're collecting donations at my office and at the City Hall in Salinas and Mayor Kimberly Craig's office to once again try to provide, uh, some holiday cheer for all the children there. And we will be, um, collecting those up until December 21st, when we will be delivering them with, uh, Salinas firefighters and Asana and making sure every kid gets, um, something like school supplies, a backpack, winter clothing, and hopefully a gift card for each child as well. So, um, and I thank the, the BACS for partnering with us once again, City Salinas and hopefully a few sponsors to, um, um, be able to pay for those needs. With that, if there's nothing else, then we will close this item. Thank you Lauren and thanks to all of, um, Ms. Baker and to all the team there at Bay Area Community Service, we appreciate it. Keep up the good work. Okay, we are now going to other board matters, starting with, uh, CAO comments.
No comments to share this afternoon?
All right. Um, hope you had a good vacation though, CAO.
Yes, that I did. And we did go to C-SAC, so we did.
That's right. Okay, we're going to new referrals, uh, just, this is a new referral report out, um, on item 27, um, by Supervisor Adams, the Bixby Bridge Traffic and Pedestrian Safety.
And I do have the detail on this item. It is the, a request that the county staff identify solutions to respond to immediate health and safety emergency concerns at the Bixby Bridge in Big Sur due to the increased levels of visitation resulting in traffic congestion, parking issues, blocked residential areas, uh, access, and then also unsafe illegal pedestrians, um, crossing Highway One. This has been, uh, signed to the Public Works Department, so Randy's team will be working on a response for this.
Thank you. Any comments for the public on the new referral on Bixby Bridge Traffic and Pedestrian Safety? See none? Okay, this is, we'll come back at, for more discussion on a future date. We're going to move to item number 28. Um, two referrals by Supervisor Church. Um, the first one is item 28, to consider options in response to board referral, uh, to board referral regarding the non-county entity appointment procedure for board members. And Super, um, County Council, Les Gerard and Nick Chullos are presenting on this.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, members of the board. I'll be handling, uh, uh, this matter just by myself. Uh, Mr. Chullos has some other items to take care of. So, um, last year, the board made some amendments to the selection process for, uh, county standing and ad hoc committees, and that is embodied, uh, currently in, um, County Policy G10. The policy also addressed the selection for what are called, I call non-county entities, things like TMC, the Air Board, um, other independent entities to which the Board of Supervisors makes certain appointments of board members. So let me share my screen and I'll show the current policy. So this is the current policy for non-county entities. And basically it says, uh, in a manner not to violate the Brown Act, the CAO will solicit interest from various supervisors about what non-county entities, um, on which they want to serve. Uh, the CAO shall provide that information to the chair and the chair will make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors in January and then the Board of Supervisors will, uh, make the, the various appointments. So Supervisor Church wanted to, um, draw up consideration of a different way of appointing that, uh, those entities rather, and I'm going to share my screen again to go over what I've come up with for your consideration. So what's, in, in discussing the referral with Supervisor Church, he was interested in a, sort of a round robin type of arrangement, uh, which I've tried to encapsulate here. So at the first board meeting in January, there's a selection process that begins with the chair and then rotates in numerical order where supervisors pick the non-county entity on which they want to serve. That changes every year because you'll have a different chair, and I have a couple of examples here. For example, in year one, District One is chair and selects first, then District Two, Three, Four, Five, and then you repeat until all the selections are made. But the following year, District Two is chair, so District Three selects second, uh, District Four, District Five, and then back to District One. So there's a rotating basis on which supervisors can select the non-county entity on which they want to serve. The, uh, policy, revised policy provides that supervisors can basically negotiate if they want to switch positions. There might be a situation where nobody selects a given non-county entity, so the policy provides that in that instance, the chair will make, uh, appointments, uh, to those entities. So that's the draft. It's, it's sort of, um, a round robin, if you will, an NFL draft type of procedure that changes every year, uh, that's, so that supervisors will have the opportunity to, in, in a given year, priority pick which non-county entities on which they want to serve. Uh, I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
We'll go to Supervisor Church first because this is a serious referral.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, this is just, um, really an effort is part of my whole, my whole, my whole goal in running for office anyway, was bringing about some ideas and different ideas and change and, and all, and this is one of them because I'm looking here, I try to improve just the way the process works, government works. Onto this, the, um, the standing committee rotations that were at, um, the County Council referred to, you know, is a good, it's a step in that direction. I realized there was a few glitches within it that I was uncomfortable, um, with onto there, so that's why I presented this as an alternative. And, um, uh, you know, I just, just basically stating that it's, it's, it's important to have a good structure in place that is, that, that leads to trying to bring out the, the best abilities and, and to everyone. But at this point, it was, it's idea put out there, um, just like Supervisor Adams, I believe is the one who put out the, the rotational for, uh, standing committees initially. And just need to see what other supervisors feel about it or whether to continue the same process or to go on and look at, um, um, you know, doing some other future modifications.
All right. Well, I'll give my two cents. Um, I, I'm not excited about it, um, and I'll say that, and this is the reasons why. I, I, um, prior to this job, I served in the, the state legislature, those appointments were made by the speaker and having served as a chair of a committee, it, it, just to gain, uh, knowledge on a particular policy area, you can just do it by one, one year to the next. This, this new proposal, it's trying to address something that's not broken, um, and now it's forcing, um, choosing committees by random, um, random of whose chair and whose number is last. So if this starts next year, you're first, I'm last, I get the last choice. Is that, is that fair? I, I don't think it is. Um, and then just to, had, do a round robin, if you pick the first one, then whoever gets the second one, that's, that's not, I don't think that's good, smart, that's not smart public policy. I, I, I think when, I think, I try to always minimize the disruption because I think a lot of us are in committees that we like serving on, um, at least on the non-county side. And, and it takes years to build up experience on, 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 um, on transit issues or on 3CE or now 6CE, whatever counties it is now. Um, all these areas take some years to get grasp policy and experience and have institutional memory. And once you get a few years under your belt, then now you're out because somebody else picked, got a first pick over you and then you can't continue to build upon your knowledge and institutional memory. And I think you serve, our, our county better by being able to build up experience, build up knowledge, build up relations with those other board members and then be able to move goals within that institution. That's something that takes several, several years to accomplish. You can't accomplish things from one year to the next. So for that reason, I think, is why I think that's not the best, um, policy, um, when we're trying to, um, and advance within these organizations. Sometimes it takes a few years to get up to become the chair or the vice chair, serving leadership roles in those areas and certainly carrying out certain goals that, um, individual members want to accomplish in that agency. Certainly on my experience on serving on this Groundwatch Sustainability Agency, it took us the first five, six years to get through that first difficult phase. That's why when you were interested, I was willing to kind of switch there because I had put in that time. I thought, okay, we, after six years, I think we have done a good amount, um, and I got through, um, the first phase of establishing that agency. I, I couldn't make a change at that point, but if you had taken me out the second year or third year, I think you would have taken me out in the middle of a lot of important work that we were going, in the middle of and negotiating. And so, so for those reasons, I think, I think keeping the current, um, work set, I think it's, it's, would, creates the least disruption and I think would serve us well. Um, and the current process allows for us, just like you and I did, um, when you expressed interest, um, um, I was willing to switch. We were able to make some changes, uh, in a amicable manner. I think this really will create a lot of disruption year to year, depending on who is the chair and who gets the first pick. And even though there's an opportunity to exchange, if the other colleague doesn't want to do that, um, then you're, you're left with the tough luck that you were dealt with on that particular year. Uh, so those are my two cents on it. Anyone else? Oh, yeah, Supervisor Adams.
Thank you. Supervisor Church, I really appreciate your bringing this forward. And I, I support the concept of this. I reviewed it really closely and reviewed the, the proposed new language. And I, I think perhaps we might want to just revisit the language a bit. One of the things that troubles me about it is that I, I'm not a big fan of having two totally separate methods by which we are using or being placed on, um, the committees that we, that we're going to be, um, responsible for. Um, I, I've had a chance to think about it, um, a bit, and I think that the two separate processes, the G10 process of rotation and then this other process, um, I think that there's some errors, some areas where we need to really some areas where we need to really think about it a little bit differently, you know, and I do worry as well about what Supervisor Leho just said about people serving for just one year. I can see where that would be, you know, you're barely getting up to speed, and then it's, it's time to move. So I think having a two or three-year limit would be a better approach. But as I said, it's your referral, but what I was wondering is if it might serve us well if we could pull it from today or postpone it from today, and maybe I'd be happy to work with you on this because of the work that I did on the, on the, the G10, and perhaps we would be able to come up with something that would hit some of the concerns that have been voiced today, and we wouldn't be, you know, kind of pushing through as quickly as, as we seem to be, since we only have one more board meeting scheduled, actually, before the end of the year. So my thought would be, if you would be willing, and it's, as I said, I'd, I'll be supportive of your, it's your referral, so I'll be supportive of how you want to do this, but perhaps if, if you and I would agree to, if you would agree to pull it, and then you and I could work on it for a bit, and then just bring it back after the first of the year. Because I think it's, I know what you want is to have better processes throughout the county, and I totally support that, but I also believe that it is better to take a longer time to do it and have it really right than do it quickly and just have it be, you know, something. So forgive me for the long rambling answer, but that's, that's what I'm thinking.
Thank you. Let's go to the supervisor, Supervisor Askew, and then Supervisor Lopez.
So I think I fully support the idea of improving our processes, having there be good governance in place, and, and doing what we can to eliminate some of the highly personal and what can be controversial and inflammatory, starting the year off in this space where we're, you know, at odds as a board. I think, I think that is a, is a, is a goal that I 100% am supportive of. But having sort of looked at this and played out, you know, how different scenarios could play out, and recognizing that the board, that the agencies that we're talking about are critical regional decision-making bodies, and the, in many cases, in some cases, the board seat is one that has been there for a while, or is a swing and fundamentally changed the outcome of a direction. I think that the process that we use to make the appointments really does matter. And I, I can envision a scenario or a reality where this change could lead to even greater power struggles that are more personal than they already have been. So I'd love us to think through it maybe a little bit more, if there is a way to have there be process, because I think that also what I recognize that, I think this, this addresses is that in the past, there have been some very lopsided lists of appointments that have been made, that are, that are far from equitable in terms of how a division of power is, is, is shared among the board. And so I think the goal to, to, to move beyond that is a, is a noble one, but I guess I would be supportive of Supervisor Adams, if you guys wanted to form an ad hoc and, you know, maybe do some more research and figure out what other counties have done, identify clearly the goals that we're trying to achieve, and if there are some options that may allow us to, to get to a place of better process or clearer process or fairer process that doesn't set us up for interpersonal conflict at the beginning of the year, I could, I could be up to that.
Supervisor Lopez.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed. I, you know, I'm looking at it, there's, to me, some questions, I think the most prudent being what would that list of commissions be? Because every year when I was chair, when it's come back, it's sort of a flowing list. We're like, oh, maybe this, maybe that, these get appointed at other times of the year. So being clear on which committees we're talking about, I think would be important. Overall, given the history of appointments and struggles, and really using the word equity, important, how we use it is important in this context. I, I don't think that equity has been part of the process in the past, so I, I would see a bit more fairness. I share some of the concerns from Supervisor Leho about the length of knowledge within an institution to really make change and spending a year, year and a half, learning it in order to understand how that policy needs to be shifted and what the, just the process to shift it, because that looks different at Air Board than it does at TMC than it does on any other body. But overall, I would not be opposed to at least having an ad hoc look at it and come back with some recommendations. I, I don't think you're, the path that you propose is a wrong one. I think we might need some detail and nuance, but I, I think you're on to something.
Yep. Thank you for your comments. Any comments from the public on this item? See nobody in chambers, nobody online? Last call? Well, just to bring this back, perhaps we bring this before another date, Supervisor Church, the only thing I would add, we know there's some controversial non-county committees, right? Lafco, for one, and, and having people, the two former and only Latino members that are no longer on there, and Lafco, that is, in a county that is 60% Latino, having not, none, no Latino Lafco members is one example. So maybe that would be a change right there, but I know the difference is going to be when it comes to M1W, Lafco, six E, what is it, six E now?
Three C.
Okay. Whatever it is. So GSA, there's some committees that are, you know, that are, are the, are the political fights in this, in this county. So if, if, this will open that up to a fight every year, you know, for some, some of those committees, you know, and just, just to put that on the table. And the last thing I want to rate, just on some of these, like Lafco and all these boards, for example, it takes some time to get up to leadership, to be a chair of that committee, and, and disruption on the county supervisor's side might just empower Monterey County supervisors from ever being able to build up to become chair of those particular agencies and boards. That's all I want to say, so back to you Supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate everybody's comments. They're well spoken. I think the seniority is, is an issue onto there, and I like to, I like to throw out ideas, and some of them are good, some are not so good, and some kind of in the middle, and, you know, need tweaking, and perhaps this is one of them. I really like to take up Supervisor Adams' offer, she made that first proposal on the, on the rotation for the standing committees. I've kind of dug into it this way. I, you know, think it perhaps is, something is, is going to be changed, it needs to be done thoughtfully, it takes time. I probably, at this point, you know, trying to turn something around by early next year might be a little too quick onto it. It might take a few months and some discussion, looking around and just seeing what else is, what else is done, see if there is something that is, is just more effective on, on the way things should be run, where multiple, multiple thoughts are, you know, multiple, multiple experiences and, and inputs are put into the whole process of, and, and having some diversity, and a whole lot of different reasons, from experience to, to background to whatever it may be. So I mean, that's where I kind of leave it, if we want to, you know, have Supervisor Adams and I, you know, look into this a little bit more and then come back on it sometime next year, I'd be all, you know, welcome on doing that, and we can evaluate at that point.
So we'll do the board, we could form an ad hoc committee with Supervisor.
That's my motion.
Adams, that's your motion?
Yep.
Okay, and then bring us back at a, on a date when you guys are ready, working with staff, okay. Is there a second? It's Lopez, okay?
I'll second. Got Lopez, okay.
Lopez, be here in chambers. Benefits of being here in the room.
Would be there if I, if I should.
I know, I know. I hope you get better Supervisor Adams. Yeah, we don't want to get sick. All those in favor, please say aye. Oh, let's do a roll call, sorry. Forget about that.
Supervisor Church.
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez.
Aye.
Supervisor Askew. Supervisor Adams.
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Leho.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. Let's go to your second referral, response, item 29. Analysis report regarding a referral seeking to amend the Monterey County Code to establish littering fines for illegal dumping and littering of solid waste and refuse. And we got Rick Incarnacion going to lead the way.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Rick Incarnacion, Director of Environmental Health Bureau Chief for the Environmental Health Bureau, County Monterey. I'm here along with Maria Ferdin. She should be online, the Solid Waste Management Services Environmental Health Supervisor, to provide the preliminary analysis report for Board Referral Number 2023.20, littering fines for illegal dumping. It is recommended that the Board of Supervisors basically receive our preliminary analysis report and provide further direction as appropriate. Board Referral 2023.20 seeks to amend Monterey County Code to mirror fines similar to neighboring San Benito County with closely shared county lines, also to prevent illegal dumping and littering, promote an enjoyable environment, and protect our natural resources. Focus will be on amending current county code, specifically Monterey County Code 10.41.040, and all other applicable local codes to facilitate an effective response to holding those responsible for illegal dumping and littering by clarifying code violations, increasing penalties, and updating language to emphasize local roles and responsibilities. Two sections of the Monterey County Code address litter. Again, Monterey County Code 10.41.040, litter generally. A person shall not throw or deposit or cause to be thrown or deposited any refuse upon any premises whatsoever, except at a permitted disposal facility. Transporting refuse in a container used for burning. A person shall not transport refuse in any container that has been used for burning. In state law relative to littering, the attention of all persons is directed to Section 374 at Secura of the penal code and other provisions of laws of the state prohibiting the littering of public highways. Monterey County Code also, Section 1.22100, administrative citations and fines currently are, first violation $100, second $200, third $500. Estimated project cost, this project cost, and I was being conservative here, the estimated project cost to require a minimum of six months to one year of staff time, working at a minimum of five hours a week on this project. The estimated cost is undetermined at this time. Staffing level estimate at minimum, a staff include one environmental specialist, four, which is the supervisor, one environmental specialist, three, the senior lead, one director, one assistant director, one health, one health program coordinator, one management analyst, three, to collaborate, assess, analyze, and review the components that would create an effective enforceable outcome. Current departmental challenges, departmental challenges currently are limited to staffing resources and competing operational priorities. However, every effort will be made to ensure that the project is managed and prioritized to provide progress updates. And definitely if the direction is to prioritize and make this number one, we'll, we'll get it done. Proposed response date, the initial estimated evaluation and feasibility response date is April 2024. Again, just to be conservative, from there, an estimated timeline of, to completion can be established no later than 2024, but again, if to, if the direction is to prioritize, we're all for it. In summary, it is recommended that the Board of Supervisors receive a preliminary analysis report and further direction. And with that, I'm available for questions and also if Maria Ferdin's online.
All right, let's open up for questions. Comments for Supervisor Church.
Your referral. Yeah, thank you for the, the presentation. I'm, I guess I'm having a little difficulty understanding why there's, you know, so much staff time has to be into something where basically we already have a code written and have one and two and $500 fines, and what my referral is, is about, is purely talking about increasing those, and, you know, much of these, much of this work is, I'm sure has already been done by San Benito County since they've already adopted something. So I'm, it just, to me, it just seems like it, it should be a much simpler process on, on this, and I'm not quite sure, we're just talking about raising fines, why it has to go a quite in this depth.
Through the chair. Thank you, Supervisor Church. I understand the, the concern, and with respects to my initial response, just to be candid, of six months to one year was based on my assessment of our current resources. We are down staff, we do have a lot of big rocks in the way this coming, next calendar year, but we are all for reaching the goal of eliminating litter through the three Es, education, eradication, and enforcement, and in this case, enforcement by increasing the fees. The six-month to one-year timeline was just based on my own experience with amending current county code. 1.22 is, is the nuisance code, not just that only refer to litter, and as I pointed out in 10.41, our current code is very light on, on identifying, you know, the specific code related to littering. I would like to keep it up as much as possible, utilize other codes that are out there for, as, that are being recommended for templates with respects to controlling litter. And again, in my experience, and when it comes to amending code, there's always stakeholder input, time to, to get stakeholder input, time to coordinate with county council, and I do, I do agree that the process should be simple and straightforward, and I, I'm all for, again, to expedite if needed to increase penalties related to litter, but also trying to gain more resources to address the issue.
Sure, yes. I, I understand where you're coming from. Honestly, I think we just want to, if we want to be serious about litter, and I'm all for the three Es, I mean, that's how you go about it, but, you know, part of the thing, you know, $100, you know, for your first offense, I mean, there's people dumping stuff all the time, we're having trouble catching them, so $100 isn't going to deter them too much when it's probably cost them more than that to go to dump. And I think that's where we really need to look at trying to bring this up to a level so that there's some punitive, punitive penalties for people, and, and not just saying, well, you know what, I'm not going to, you know, my player in North County, we got to go to Salinas, you got to go to, to Marina, and you, you're going to spend a whole morning and then pay, you know, again, you're going to pay the $100. So I, I think it's essential we update this, and I think we might as well really be serious and update it so that by the time you're catching somebody on a third offense, they're doing the maximum that we can, we can hit them on because that's somebody that really needs to be discouraged.
Okay, I agreed, they should go for this only preliminary, so maybe I agree that to move forward, update it, modernize this ordinance, others, before we go to public. Supervisor Lopez.
I think it's a question of procedure on this, just clarity, because if the request is simply to change the three levels of fines, I, I think what I'm missing here is an understanding of legally would that hold up? Les?
This is an administrative fine, so the board has broad discretion on what to set. There are limits, you can't, you know, you can't set a fine of $1 million for littering, you know, the due process issue, but it's not like a, a charge to get a permit or a fee where you have to do a fee study to set the appropriate amount that you charge. This is an administrative penalty, so you have broad discretion. I was going to offer that my office would work very closely with environmental health to speed up the process, we can help do the research, help draft whatever is necessary to try to get this back as, as quickly as possible, so.
As least expensive as possible.
Yeah, and bind my successor.
Add on to your plate, yeah. Supervisor Lopez.
So if I could finish my thought, I, I agree that the numbers are out of date, and when I think about current structures around our problem, hotspots, a lot of folks might not know this, but the minimum dump fee now in Salinas is $50, the minimum dump fee in Gonzalez is $17. So when I, when I think about what a real deterrent is, to me, it's tenfold, whatever that minimum is at the Salinas level, so to me, that's 500, then making it serious and, you know, going fivefold on that goes 2,500, and then 10,000 as a max is proposed by Supervisor Church on the third offense would make sense. There was a question asked at the last reading of this, I think it was Supervisor Leho, about how many folks have actually been fined in the last year, like, how many people have we actually caught? What are we talking about in terms of the resource we're putting in, right? I think that's a critical piece that I think we should state on the record for the public in the session if we have the data.
Supervisor Askew or Adams?
Adams.
Go ahead, Adams. Supervisor Askew has no comments.
Okay, okay, thank you very much then. One of the, I mean, Chris virtually said it, and Rick definitely said it, but the thing that I think matters the most in this is how are we going to enforce it? And the simple fact that, as you had said earlier, that there are very few instances that there are very few instances where we actually were able to, you know, catch somebody, so to speak. So to me, if there's going to be a cost involved, I think it's going to be in figuring out how we're going to be able to enforce this, so that the funding that we do get from the now 1,000, 2,500, and 10,000, will cover the cost of what we need to do to enforce this. I, I think it's probably the trickiest part of this entire problem that we have in the county. But, you know, who knows? There's got to be a way to do it. And I'm so supportive of raising the, the fees, and, and just with the hope, though, that we can have a very realistic enforcement to this. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll go to the public on this now. Members of the public? Okay, I'll bring this back. I just wanted to follow up with what you said, Supervisor Lopez, because I think that's going to be a factor now, on that new change at the, what is it called? Salinas new?
The partnership where we've moved to Madison.
Madison, yeah. The Madison, was it the trans?
Transfer station.
Transfer station. I didn't get the wording right. At the transfer station, because before, when it was at Market, you could go in, and if you had just a small item, you could dump it at no cost, or if you had a, a extra bag of garbage that didn't fit, you could go in, it was a very small charge, or no charge at all. Now, as Chris rightly pointed out, there's a $50 fee. And during CSAC, there was some wins here, so my patio umbrella got all mangled up. And I just tried to dump that, because it didn't fit in my can, and they were going to, it was $50. And instead, I had to go home and use my one bulk item.
Tried to dispose of it, not dump it.
Yeah. Well, [laughing] Salinas Valley Waste jargon would, would correct me. But, but even then, even the bulk item, which was, you could, you could ask for a large item to be picked up, now it has to be a three by three. So I think you are going to start seeing more cases now, where people have big items that now don't, don't qualify for the one bulk item pickup anymore. And when they do have items that, that, that they could probably have sent to the transfer station, and now, now that they're charging $50 more, it seems that's going to exacerbate this issue, rather than reduce it. I, I thought this transfer center was going to be a, a better thing, but it's now way more limited in terms of what it offers to the community.
I, I just want to share on the frequency issue. A lot of you saw that spot that we put out that commercial with, you know, around Halloween, and from the Solid Waste Authority helping on the education side. I was told to meet on that loop on Old Stage, where the dump site was, right? They had staged something. I pulled over that day, the day before, we'd cleaned it all up. I pulled over, and I told them, here, and nobody's here. And they were like, oh, no, you're at the wrong dump site. People dumped overnight. So I went from this dump site, which was refrigerators, over to this next site where there was mattresses. And they showed me, they brought about five cardboard boxes that looked like waste, but there were mattresses and headboards. They said the mattresses and headboards showed up overnight, too. Right? It's just the frequency is climbing. And so I, I think, as everyone has stated, we need all three Es, right? Enforcement piece, needs to be partnered with cameras, which we've talked about in the past, to be able to capture folks. Because if, if we don't, I mean, we can raise them, and I think that gets back to that question, how often are we catching and enforcing? All those pieces have to be tied together to get there.
All right. So this will come back. We'll move this forward. Do you need a motion for that, to have this continue, or just, it's already in motion already?
I would move to, to move it forward, but I think, you know, I want to see a more expedited process, like we've talked about here, and not really pulling in a lot of health department resources. I don't, don't think we really need to go to stakeholders on this. I think we all realize we need to raise this, this up.
We need a motion, or just direction? A motion's fine? Okay.
So my motion's kind of long there, but I just want to make sure I get the general, general, the drift of where we're going on this. Not that it uses as, as the recommend, as the project has been laid out here.
We'll make sure it gets done by December 22nd, 5 o'clock.
We got it made.
Before Leslie's.
One, one last request, a friendly amendment, if we could also put the GRE lens on that, the governing for racial equity lens on that. And I'm happy to be the second on that.
All right, good. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.